Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Douglas County Land and Board meeting for January 8, 2019. The meeting is being recorded. It's available for viewing on the Douglas County Land Access Channel and on the website. Come to order at 7:04. Before we start the meeting, on behalf of the board and Building Department, I'd like to offer some condolences to the family of Mike Yurka, who might pass away this before Christmas. Everybody knew Mike. He came into this board many, many times over the years and presented plans as he was in single-family homes to big developments, and he was always very easy to work with and a very good engineer. And Jim Malley, who just passed away this past week.
He did?
Yeah. Jim worked for the town for many, many years in the border health as an inspector. Everybody in town knew Jim at one time or another because he was student inspection. So, on behalf of the board and the Building Department, our condolences to both families.
Here, here.
All right. First item on the agenda. Public hearing continued. ADS William Wollam Lake, Wollam Massola LLC, application for site plan review. Zero Wollam Lake Road. Public hearing is now open.
Is that a paper of visibility?
Yep.
Okay. I'm Jeff Brandt, and Luca Karts here in place of Evan today.
Evan couldn't make it to this meeting, so I've come in his stead to represent the applicant. I know last time we were here, there was some edits to the site plan that were requested by the board and also some comments that we received from town engineer that we have made to the plans. So, the plans were sent to the board last week, correct?
Yep, yep. And I have some smaller ones you kind of want to peek around as I walk through this. But I think the big changes we made, we talked about last time, was the entrance way. We made it one entrance in the northeast that is wider now. It's 30 feet wide. It's shown up here, and it's actually going to be wider during construction. And then after construction, it will go down to 30, and we'll put landscaping on either side in accordance with our landscaping plan. So, that was one of the big changes. And then the other kind of engineering one is down to the west. We did the retention base and a lot of, kind of revamped the engineering quarter to help address some town engineering questions. It has kind of revised configuration of outfall, and now it has like a berm that you can drive out on to help maintain the basin itself. And we also put in a different setup for slope breakers and diversion berms to kind of help slow the water down better than we had set up last time. Those were kind of the, I think, the three main things that we did.
Did we talk about the turnaround here that we put in?
Yep. So, there's kind of a wide area here that's kind of going to be gravel that will allow for turnaround and also turnaround of fire trucks once this is constructed. It's a really large radius, and during construction, people will be able to park there and whatnot. And we've made kind of various edits throughout the whole sheet and set of plans. I guess I could march you through them, or I don't know what you'd like to hear most. Like, I guess if you go to sheet one, just the cover sheet itself, the aerial photo, we made it a little easier to understand where our butters are. Those are the concerns. You can see who lives close by, and it's an obvious helpful thing. On the second sheet, and you turn to that, one of you, that's the, we have various notes that were made, and includes things about like more information about parking and information about our wetlands delineation, how that was done. Talks about how the module setbacks aren't going to change even though some internal changes may occur. Well, it's double-sided. And on the third sheet, then, we have all the properties shown and the butters listed, and we show the closest to butters in each side of the facility, which is a question. So, you can kind of see who's closest. I think the closest person's probably over here on the east side.
Do you have any more of these? He doesn't have one.
Don, I have a big giant set, or you can share.
Take that.
Okay.
Well, I'll read from five feet.
Okay.
I'll get it back.
Yeah. So, what else did we do?
The reaching bounds.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, thank you. So, go a little further in, you get to existing conditions plan. I think that's sheet C-100. And we actually did an on-the-ground survey. Our guys were out there during the holidays, and now we have a very accurate on-the-ground survey, which coincided exactly with what we came up with via our assessor maps. So, that's stamped by a surveyor, and we're happy with that, and hopefully you are too.
This is all wetlands flagged by an engineer. It's all the time.
Yep, it's all flagged. That now has the ORAD in it. So, as you know, we got an ORAD, and so that actual figure is in there and stamped. And we added that to the note section that the wetlands were done in accordance with this process. We have the various information for that.
Is Sheldon with DRC, the surveyor?
No. He's a subcontractor. He's at Meridian. No, no, actually, that's a different land designer, is the name of the firm. Land planning. What else did we do here? We have a separate page for a traffic plan. You guys wanted signage about before and after the site entrance. I think that's sheet C-600. And it just includes a bunch of notes about that we won't let cars and trucks idle during the construction process. We won't let cars queue or on the road coming in, that all parking has to be on-site. A bunch of things you're concerned about. We all put that in that plan in a whole bunch of ads. We added the thing about horses to, we're going to add some caution signs because horseback riding is popular to stroller motorists, and about trucks entering for motors to slow down. So, we included all that there. We added a drainage pre-plan and post-plan. Those are sheets 601 and 602. Yep, yep. So, and that kind of helps, and it'll help the engineer understand kind of how we model things. So, we put that in there. These were sort of the main things we did. What else did we show? We included a wall over here, a fence, a wooden slot fence to help hide the equipment pad. I'm not sure if we talked about that last time or not. And that also might help with noise, although noise is not an issue, mild noise. It also has an infiltration trench on the down gradient side to help catch the limited water that's on the pad. There's not a lot of water coming off the pad, but we did that so there wouldn't be an extra water coming down the hill. And then we do have the whole set of questions from you, Bill, that we could start to go through. That'd be one option, or if you have any questions beforehand.
Generally, the way it works is, and as indicated in the letter I sent, so I have my initial regulatory review letter that I sent out prior to last meeting, and typically the engineer will give me a written response to the comments, and then I'll review those for the meeting. And then it's a little back and forth that we do until everything gets nailed down. Either the issue is resolved, or they request a waiver from a requirement. So, that's usually how it ends up, one of those two things. And so, I'm still waiting for a response to that letter. I don't know how productive it will be to go through that. I mean, it's certainly welcome to, but I'm not sure it will be that productive to go through those comments in this kind of setting until we identify perhaps, you know, some difference of opinions. If we have those difference of opinions, then bring it to the board and the board can kind of steer the direction, unless they need clarification on some of them, of course.
I think there were a couple of items in your recent stormwater comments, your view of the stormwater plan that we received.
Oh, this is today's one.
But we did also respond to your letter a few weeks ago.
And I thought we-
I didn't get a response letter.
Okay. I thought we brought this to the hearing last time, and we didn't give you a copy. I thought we did, but there's a lot of papers going around. But those are the responses, I guess, from to you. And if you didn't get it, I apologize. And at this point, we've kind of gone by a lot of those issues, so we can kind of pretty straightforward, I think, compared to your last set of questions. I think most of that's all incorporated now in the plan set.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
I guess, yeah. I'm not sure it was this project, but, excuse me, last meeting you, Bill, you made a comment that the butter lots be identified?
They've done that. I think on the revised set of plans, I've seen one error that I'm aware of.
So, the fact that they're not there now is okay? I mean, they got a newer set of drawings?
They have a revised set of drawings, even from the one that I have that was submitted on the second. There's a list of addresses as well.
Oh, all three.
Yeah.
So, I think parcel seven is listed in.
But I guess we would want to, we do want to kind of go through some of your comments. If that's okay? Because I didn't get them, you know, till today, so I wish I could have responded faster.
I got them. I got the plans on the second.
I know.
So, I did get them out as quickly as I could.
Well, no, no. So, we're just kind of trying to figure out the most expedient way to address some of these.
I don't know.
Yeah. Next one. Derek. Sorry, I haven't given you a quick response to some of these questions. Not the ones I sent out today. He's saying that he handed this in at the last meeting, and I don't recall seeing this.
Right, so then if you didn't have it, you didn't have it.
Right.
Did you send that in an email or something to him as well, or PDF?
I thought I just sort of handed it out here.
Yeah, that's not, it needs to probably get stamped in an email.
Yeah, just so we all have it.
It has to go through the system, I think.
Okay.
We'll formally send that to this meeting, so you have that in your emails.
Yeah.
So, what's your comments?
Normally, we get an email so that I will take your responses and then keep the chain of comments going. So, we ultimately get to a point where I say comment addressed, or we say, you know, a waiver is required. So, it's one of those two things.
Okay.
So, it's different than the one we have in our packet tonight, right? Build it the site-
Correct.
This is stormwater review only, right?
Tonight's letter from me is stormwater review only. And I think that's the one that Jeff's talking about.
So, on the first one, we talked about using a single, that we used a single pre-development point, and that you'd like us to kind of take into account the culverts down at Shore Road as design points. And our issue on that one is that that's not part of our project or our property, and so we'd want to stop where our project stops, is right here, where our property stops. And that's how we model things. So, we didn't go down here to Shore Road. It's not part of our site. We don't own the land. So, and regardless, we engineered it so that the water coming off this part is not, complies with the mass stormwater standards and doesn't, there's no increase in flow off-site. So, I don't see the point of moving those modeling points out here or looking at culverts out here. That's just one thing that I noticed. I am not the stormwater engineer, so I can't speak to all of these, but I know that was one.
Let me just try to address that, so everyone understands what the concern is. The way stormwater modeling works is you have a pre-developed condition, meaning what the site is like today, and a post-developed condition. And the goal of that is that the stormwater runoff rate, the flow rate, cubic feet per second, mirrors the pre-existing condition. So, essentially, the downstream areas will not see any impact as a result of the change. The concern I have with their pre-existing evaluation, they have a singular design point. So, that means one design point. The whole site, they're modeling to go through one design point. So, they're developing a flow rate for one single point. Okay? The post-develop, the problem I have with that is we have three culverts, at least three culverts that go under Shore Road at various locations. And those, from my perspective, should be the design points because we want to make sure the flow rate at each of those locations, those three different locations-
Doesn't increase.
-are not being affected as a result of the project. So, the modeling should be at each of those locations so that we know the post-developed rate at each of those three locations will not change.
Right.
Instead of having one sing, so in, I guess, in the world of the site, you can have one culvert, the flow rate, the pre and post matching, but you can have one culvert being over-exerted and the other one going down significantly in flow, and that's the concern.
So, that can be achieved by doing the onsite, your site?
I'm saying that the modeling needs to reflect the existing condition of the site, so those three culverts are not experiencing more flow or less flow. It should be pretty much what's going through them now.
I've never heard of modeling stuff that's not your site. That's my issue, and we'd have to redo our, all our calculations. And when we, and when our engineer spoke with you, that was not something that came up. I was hoping all that would kind of, you know, get covered, but-
That is correct. It didn't come up, because when I spoke with your engineer, we identified a flaw in the original watershed area, and he agreed with that. So, he had to redo the calculations. So, we agreed on the watershed area, then this calculations came in, and that's when this was identified.
What's the distance from our output to where those culverts are, Jeff?
Yeah. But if this project affects them? It affects them regardless, I imagine. That's the horrible. I mean, with 45%.
Well, we'll have our, you know, our engineer look at it.
I believe we also have to balance the fact that we're, because, you know, we're going to be putting, you know, the water comes out, crosses the wetlands before it gets to Shore Drive, I believe.
Yeah. And I'm not necessarily saying it has to be at the exact location of the culverts. You'll see there's a number of wetland bodies that ultimately contribute to those culverts, and those could be the design point. But you need three separate locations that are feeding into those culverts to reflect the impact of the project.
And where the difficult location right now?
It's at one point.
Where's the design point?
Can you point it out?
I believe it is.
Yeah, there's one point, probably it's more, it's not centered on Shore Road, it's probably more towards Rhode Island.
So, you think that's feeding the far to the south culvert?
That's catching the vast majority of the site, yes.
So, they've got one point already that they've measured off one of the culverts?
Yeah, but no, it's going to change the whole watershed is the problem. And it's not an extensive analysis.
Okay. I'm just trying to gauge the level of difficulty for doing the points at the culverts.
It's not, it's not a difficult exercise.
So, what are we, is it 600 yards? Perhaps. I mean, we've got, right now, we have, you know, sort of sheet flowing down towards where those three culverts are. And those three culverts are obviously probably located at the lowest points of the water we drain underneath the road. So, we still have the same, you know, after end of our project here, we still have the same sheet flow characteristics for that piece of land. We're not changing the land between our site and the culverts.
Right, so if it doesn't change- You're changing the flow path. Okay, you're diverting the flow into that stormwater structure with one outlet. So, that a very small portion of the site is now going to the northwest corner of the site.
And don't think that the culverts were designed. They were not designed at all for anything. Just to let you know, like, you're thinking like, oh, it's set at the whatever point. No, pretend like it's just you threw it in.
Right, but we have a, we have a stamp design showing that we're not going to increase the flow rate of the property.
That's correct. I agree with that.
Which complies with the standards. So, I'm just, I don't really understand this additional, I don't understand the additional step that we need to do.
You do?
What is the reference standard that is requiring the multi-point?
It's not changing flow. So, how can it affect?
And it's in progress.
It's one of the standards, I could go grab my stormwater policy manual if you'd like in reference to the particular standard, but one of the standards is you shall not have an impact to the wetlands that are downstream of the site. And if you're changing the amount of water going to the northwest portion versus the southwest portion of the site, you're going to have an impact on the wetlands.
So, you're saying the single-point discharge that they have designed here?
Correct.
And that what you're saying theoretically, change and increase the rate to the southwest portion?
Correct.
Because it's closest to that portion.
More flow will go to the southwest, correct?
Right, but the engineer would have to do everything and stamp it again, right, for those three outflows?
They will have to model it that way, yeah.
Well, that's what they do, so.
Right now, let's say 15 cubic feet per second leaves the site, okay? What I'm, and let's say hypothetically, each culvert catches five CFS today. Their proposed design might change that so that the first culvert catches one CFS, the second catches three, and the balance goes to the other culvert. So, the flow rate will be significantly different. They mirror the pre-existing and the post-condition, but the flow distribution is changing.
So, that would have changed the wetlands habitat through, on the other side of the culverts if the flow rate changes.
Correct.
Now, this hasn't been brought up before because of what reason? Their engineer never contacted you, or they didn't have a copy of our regs to do it this way?
No, no. When I looked at their first analysis, I contacted their engineer, not Jeff, Frank, and I spoke with him about the watershed areas. I said, "Look, I can tell you this is Wollam right out of the box." He agreed with me. So, he redid the calculations, sent them to me. I received them on January 2nd.
Yep.
I reviewed them as quickly as I could and got the comments out today.
So, is the reason that it hasn't been brought up before because it's not showing the culverts on this particular print? Is that why this hasn't come up before?
And why are we finding out about this two months down the road and not earlier? This is what I'm getting at.
Really, two months? He didn't get the calculations until five days ago.
Right, but I mean, the regs, they started doing, they started doing stormwater.
We filed our stormwater report two months ago, and it's been revised just slightly since then. So, that's why it's hard for us to react at this point, because a lot has gone by.
Were those shown on the previous plans? Had you indicated that?
The culverts are not shown.
No, they're not on our site, so.
Well, I mean, even off-site, I mean, they should, I'm just asking, were they?
They're on the property. They're on the property of the site.
No, they're not. No, they're on someone else's property.
They're on Shore Road.
They're on Shore Road. Well, then, heck, find out how. But the water off of this site goes to those culverts.
Correct.
Let's call it that way. The water off of this site.
Right.
But in different proportions and-
Correct, and that's what the concern is, the proportions.
To be honest, I mean, you know, some of the, if you have a culvert, I'm not sure where the exact location of the culverts are, but you could have a culvert up here that will be taking a lot of water from other properties that aren't ours, you know, that we don't, that we're not, you know, that these changes-
Right, but the whole point of modeling it is to take the existing condition and mirror the existing condition.
Yes, but if the existing condition is, includes a lot of these other properties that we don't control and we're not changing.
That's correct, so they're not going to change. Only your site is.
So, how are we supposed to, I guess, how are we supposed to know which, from here?
We're getting into details of modeling and methodology.
Yes, that's why we want to understand.
I think what you're looking for is a concept discussion from the board.
I think you have to tilt, let's say you slope your land so it feeds into the culverts equally as it does today. Do you know what I mean? Your site, and that's kind of what, so your ground, without solar panels themselves, but the ground-
So, you're swaling, you're swaling, so it might have to increase-
Everybody gets fed equally to what they're being fed.
So, as it is now, it should be, I guess, is what Bill's saying.
It shows the single-point discharge.
Overburdening, yeah.
That's, that's the one issue.
Correct. And I think the modeling, so what Bill mentioned, is if you have a, you can take it onto the edge of the wetland there, up in the northwest corner, right? So, there's other spots, so you don't have to take it at the culvert itself, but you can take it off the back.
And there may not be any change once the engineer does his modeling. I mean, it may be a-
It's not like there are streams going through here. To me, it's like it's a, it's a wetland, it's just going to fill up with water. No matter where it comes, what bathtub it comes from, it's going to just rise and fall, and when it gets over here, water's going to go out of the culverts.
But you've got, you've got like one pipe of culvert, right? If you overfeed one area and you're shifting too much water to that area, that's the concern.
But it's not, it's like, it's not like a stream going to that culvert that I know.
But you pitch the, if you tilt the table, you could push water all towards one side, one pocket, in that way. So, that's, I see Bill's point.
I think we have something that's stated for today, this morning. So, I think your stormwater engineer should address each comment. I don't feel comfortable going through all these. Bill should talk with his stormwater engineer, and then they could, I'm sure there's going to be a few small other revisions, so I don't think we should waste time on this specific issue.
I was just ready to save it.
Okay. We don't want to get anybody upset with any-
The intent wasn't to go through every single comment, but that was, that was the one, the main comment that we didn't really understand.
Right, if that was the only comment, I could see how we could hash it out and try to find a happy medium.
Yeah, that was sort of a typical one.
Yeah, so now we all know.
Our concern is, our concern is how we can reasonably accomplish what you're asking, so is why we needed the clarification. So, we'll go back and we'll talk to our stormwater engineer and see if, see if we can reasonably accommodate what you're asking for. And if we, if we cut, then we'll come back to you and see if we can have a discussion.
A waiver.
Yeah, or it might be a deal where everything's going to be just fine, but I think the town is just looking for a record in the stamp stating that it is going to be fine.
That's the key.
That's the whole key. And I fully understand, I mean, I understand exactly where you're going. I understand what Bill's saying. I understand it's been two months back and forth, but the idea is, is to protect the stormwater pipes and all that, the drainage pipes, and the people's property downstream from all this. So, just get it all reviewed. I mean, there might be a change, there might not be a change, but we need to know the digits and have it stamped. And with that, I mean, I think the rest of it is pretty well hammered out and straightforward.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we're sort of agreed on the, you know, the physical aspects of the site and the landscaping and the positioning of everything.
And where it is a big area, you are talking, you know, taking all the trees down and stuff, so.
No, I totally understand that.
It's one of those areas where, you know.
We understand, we understand it's an area where-
Just why I didn't give it a stamp.
It can be sensitive, we've got to do it right. Yeah, we understand that, otherwise we're getting there very quickly.
Yeah, because once it's in, it's in. It isn't like you can go back and change it. So, we'll try to do it right the first time and be done with it.
Yeah, we'll, yeah, try not to go back and change it at least.
Okay. Are you intending to respond to this that was sent out today?
Yes, we will. And we might have to have a conversation.
I'm sure we'll have several. One question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Would you be willing to have, allow a condition in the decision indicating that you will enter into a pilot agreement with the selectmen or a TIF?
TIF?
Taxic or increment finance?
Not familiar with TIF, but our intention is to enter into a pilot agreement. You know, we.
So we will, we're planning on putting that as a condition in the decision?
Yeah, that would be fine.
Through the select, through the selectmen, the board of the selectmen?
Obviously, it'll have to be negotiated. We can't sort of set a pilot rate, you know, as a condition of approval. You know, now it wouldn't need to be negotiated with the board of the selectmen.
I mean, the pilot, so you would be negotiating with the selectmen without a rate after approval, or you're?
So in terms of, you know, pilot might say, you know, you're gonna pay X, you're gonna pay Y.
Right.
That, that's the part I guess negotiated.
But we would like the selectmen to be satisfied with that, before we give our approval?
That's a condition.
You're not gonna set the rate, he's not gonna set the rate.
Right, right, the selectmen and they will negotiate.
I'm fine with that being a condition, I just, I just can't have a set pilot rate as a condition.
No, 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 you're gonna negotiate that with the.
None of us is.
Not to do with us. Yeah, that's absolutely fine with us.
That's great.
Okay, that's gonna be a condition on all of them coming in.
And modifications for bylaw.
Just to make it super clear.
Yeah, super clear, yeah, yeah.
Definitely.
Are there any other, are there any other conditions the board's considering that we could discuss this time?
I'll send you a draft.
Okay. Do you think we could get a draft fairly soon, or is that still?
Yeah, I've got it started. It's based on an old one, I got another example I'm gonna go through, so I wanna combine the two, and then I'll send it out.
Because we pretty much have this project ready to go from a utility perspective, and obviously from a site plan perspective, we're ninety-nine percent there. So what I'd like to do is if, you know, if we end up, fully end up continuing this to the next meeting, seeing as how we have some, some comments to address and that sort of thing. But I'd like to see if we can, you know, at the next meeting, maybe, you know, have the conditions drafted. And obviously, we will work hard to respond to your stormwater comments in that time, make sure that's all buttoned up. See if we can vote for approval at the next meeting.
And also the selectmen in between, right, between now and then.
Well, no.
That'll be the condition.
It'll be a condition for the.
It's a condition that they will work out.
Because if, we can approve it, but if they don't.
Just working out.
The condition will lag longer until that.
Wouldn't hold them up on our end.
Very good.
Our next step is building permit after this, so any conditions you give us here would be conditioned, a building permit would be conditioned.
So we meet every two weeks anyways, so starting off the new year, so it's not like a monthly board.
Yeah, it was only one meeting for a month the last two months because it was.
Okay, that's good. That's definitely good.
Two weeks, we're back again, so we can get everything wrapped up in two weeks.
Good.
Are there any other questions from the board or from anybody else that we can answer?
There's no expected new comments?
Nobody else on the board has any questions or comments?
Unless the design changes.
How's that on the board? Okay, this is a public hearing, does anybody in the audience have any questions or comments at this time? Seeing none, okay. Make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Is there anything on that? Can I see that?
It's gonna be two weeks, do you already got it?
Is it the twenty-second?
That's the eighth, that's the.
Twenty-second?
Twenty-second.
No, there's nobody on it, yeah.
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for E S D Wallo Mass Solar LLC to January twenty-second, two thousand nineteen at seven P M.
Second.
Presented by Tracy, seconded by Mike Z, any further comments, questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose, abstain? Stayed here for this hearing, I'll be meeting again in two weeks.
Yep, thanks for your presentation.
Thanks for coming in.
Thanks, guys. Hey, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Back at you.
This is yours.
Nope.
No, oh, sorry. Yeah.
Every time I read this, renewables, I think of Edelweiss.
He's leaving, he's not refusing at all.
He's leaving the meeting?
Yeah.
Are you accusing yourself in this next, are you just leaving the meeting?
I'm accusing myself of the next item.
Are you making more notes?
You're absent.
All right. Accusing himself in the next public hearing, and that he's leaving the meeting.
Nice trick.
Yeah.
Who stole your hat, man? I don't like that sweater, by the way. It's a hell of a bean, I think. That boy can't.
You ready, boy?
I don't bring my good friend.
Next item on the agenda. Public hearing continued, Public Renewables LLC, the application for site plan review, one seventy West Street. Public hearing is now reopened.
All right. Good evening, members of the board, my name is Jeff Murphy with Beals and Thomas. I would like to kind of pick up our discussion where we left off last time. We received a letter from Bill last, end of last week with his comments, and we are working to address his comments and respond to those formally. I would like to kind of talk through some of the items that we had gone through last time with, in terms of seeing what we can do to provide some additional, you know, turnoffs and, and things to allow, you know, better access into the site. So we kind of have, you know, an interim plan set going of those changes. We've reevaluated the construction entrance, or the entrance to the site here at West Street to try to improve that access. So I'm kind of gonna jump into that for you here. So one of the things that we're gonna do here for the plans is kind of add an overall plan that shows the whole site on one sheet, but then, you know, our subsequent three sheets set up, so that you can see everything in greater detail. In terms of our layout changes, we've got a bit of an expanded access drive here, and we've looked at turning movements here for W B sixty-seven tractor trailer, as well as for a fire truck, being able to come into the site here. We've added a temporary contractor parking and staging area here. So they have this area here that now they can park or pull off to the side, which will allow for better traffic movement in, in and out of the site here. And similarly, we've added another kind of pull-off slash turnaround in this area that can be used for, you know, construction vehicles, as well as, you know, the fire truck can also turn around here as well. And I have some auto-turn kind of examples, exhibits here that I can go with you as well, just to show that. And similarly, we've added an additional area here where is another turnaround spot, and the access road.
So those turnarounds are for, to address the Fire Chief's comments, which are appended to my letter?
Yep.
Can you, just for the, can you, what's the distance from the street to when it enters the main site?
Yep, so the distance from here to here is roughly nine hundred to a thousand feet. It's pretty close to a thousand feet, so it is a pretty good distance. And there is a kind of an open grass field here, and that's kind of why we're looking to take advantage of that, to have a pull-off here so that we can have, you know, traffic moving in and out.
And where's the bridge, is it there dark?
This is the, this is the wetland crossing, so we are pretty constrained in here. We have to try to keep things as tight and narrow as possible through here to minimize our impacts to the wetlands, as well as here. We are trying to minimize any additional impacts to this area by, you know, having to expand that.
How, how wide is the road now?
So the current width on the main access drive is fifteen feet throughout at a minimum. And then these areas here will be widened out, as well as in these turns here, we have a section here where the road comes in and does these two ninety-degree turns. These are wider than fifteen feet to allow for tractor-trailer turning movement, and I can show you kind of what that.
So those cutouts, or whatever you call them, that you showed on the previous drawing, are they being proposed to accommodate the requests for a wider road?
Yeah, so basically, we've, you know, we were looking at, can we improve circulation in and out of the site because of the distance between West Street and the main gate? And I brought, again, some examples to give a scale for you to kind of show what a full-size truck looks like on this access road, to kind of give a little bit of perspective. So I can go through those now here. So if you can see here, this is what the truck is gonna look like on this access road. So we have a fifteen-foot permanent access drive proposed, and obviously widened in these areas here. You've got this pull-off in this area, and then to this second area in the site here. So that's what the truck will look like in comparison to this pull-off here. And similarly, as we go into the other parts of the site here.
I mean, what's the length of the largest fire truck they got? Thirty feet?
We need a ladder truck, and that's the longest, but I'm not sure exactly how long it is.
Yep, so we also looked at turning movements in addition to the tractor-trailer for, we reran it for a forty-one-foot ladder truck, which would more than adequately be able to navigate all of these turns, and this is a fairly large cul-de-sac here.
That's correct. It'll fit on the road, but nobody's gonna get by it when it's on the road.
Not at fifteen feet.
Period. It ain't gonna happen.
That's why we have those several pull-offs here to.
You're calling it several, you're a thousand feet, and you only have two. Then inside the solifum area, you only have two. That's it. Right?
Yeah, we have this, this area here, the other pull-off down here, and then this is a third area in here.
But on the thousand footers, two.
The thousand footers, two, and then just inside the fence, we have this other area in here.
I think in the areas like up, where you have that turnaround, number one, that's too short, you turn around.
This one?
Yeah, I'm telling you that right now. So the whole idea is, is in that area, you can have a wider road, correct?
Yeah, they can bypass each other.
Well, the overall objective here is.
Is the least amount of.
We're trying not to generate more impervious surface.
I understand that.
To reduce runoff.
But sometimes safety supersedes that.
Sure.
So.
Right, and I think that there is enough room here that we.
You drive truck?
We have two, room for two vehicles to pass each other, two large vehicles to pass each other, and a pull-off here, and we have.
Again, that is for turning around and stuff like that, I mean, do you drive truck?
I do not drive a truck.
Okay, there's not enough room there, I'm telling you that right now.
Well, this.
You get a straight axle, turn it back into that point, trying to turn around, and something else sitting there to get by it, you're in one tight area.
Right.
There's plenty of land there where it could be opened up a little bit more, I think, that's my personal opinion.
Okay.
So.
And wouldn't they, instead of backing up, wouldn't you make it into a semicircle? So if somebody has to turn, they go like around the circle, and then they turn, instead of backing up into like a little wedge? I don't know.
I mean, we can look at a different option there, a different configuration.
I'd rather have a circle.
To try to make some, you know, make it a little more intuitive. Again, this is just, this is just an idea.
Yeah, well, I'm just throwing it back, I mean, I appreciate, it's more than what you had on the last one, but.
Yep.
Reading the comments from the Fire Chief, I mean, you've read them like I did.
We don't wanna.
Yeah, I understand, but.
It's, I understand where it's not gonna be used every day.
Yeah.
It only takes once.
Right, and don't we want to try to avoid backing up? This isn't backing up the beep beep beep, all that stuff? Who needs that? If you don't have to, you don't have to, right? There's neighbors, I mean, there are neighbors that would hear that. It's not a big thing, but it's.
Once it's built, it's not gonna be.
No, there's no activity.
My concern is, let's say rescue goes in there, and the element is just trying to get out, because they got there first, or something to that extent. I mean, if the road was three hundred feet long, or four hundred feet long, or whatever, that's one thing. But just the road alone, we're talking a thousand feet. So, I mean, we look at our housing development, you know, there's twenty driveways you can turn around and then stuff like that in a thousand feet. Whereas here, we're getting two points, and even those two points are really small.
Something about, yeah, so I'll look at it.
Sure.
We had a hundred foot, a hundred foot radius.
How many circles for the cul-de-sac?
For the last project, we had a hundred feet turnaround though.
That would be good.
But.
And he was okay with that, instead of having two exits.
Yeah, he did it.
Well, they had the full perimeter wrapped on a road.
Road, too, yeah.
When you get an opportunity, can you talk about the bridge and construction and footings and what your tonnage is on these trucks and fire trucks? What is the, you know, what are you designing for, for tonnage?
Yeah, so to switch gears to the bridge, so the bridge is going to be a design-build contract with a separate bridge designing company. We actually just worked with them on a project in Winchendon, I actually have some photos of that bridge. They, and I'd be happy to pass them around here for you, if you want to take a look at it. The dimensions, the widths is gonna be identical in terms of the passable width. I think it's a sixteen-foot wide bridge right here, essentially will look very much similar to that.
Is it sixteen overall, or does that include the rails at all?
I think the clear inside width might be about fourteen feet, but they've been driving trucks in and out of that site, no problem. And that's a very similar configuration, fifteen-foot access road. That one's actually on a little bit trickier of a curve than what we're proposing.
Is this, what is the exact width of this? Because it, I mean, pictures are odd, it looks like it's.
The overall outside.
It looks wider, this one.
The overall width on that is sixteen feet.
It is sixteen.
Yeah.
It is.
Okay, and what are the footings and, and design?
Yep, let me pull up the.
Jeff, can I keep these photos?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Guys, did you want to see this?
Yeah.
So let me just jump here to the bridge details. So the bridge is gonna be consists of, it's gonna have timber pilings that are gonna support the span of the bridge. So if the design-build fridge company, fridge company, they will produce their own construction set of plans that will be stamped and sealed by a structural engineer. This is a, basically a schematic version of that bridge design with the general dimensions that they, you know, this is a very similar dimension to the photos I've just provided.
Is that helical piers underneath the?
Nope, so, so they're driven timber piles, so timber piles are driven in on either side.
And what are they preserved with?
That's a good question.
In, in the wetlands, I mean, what do they, is there anything to worry about?
They are treated, they're treated to, they're, these things are installed in wet, wetland areas.
In my opinion, I don't think that's for us to talk about. We can condition it, say it's gotta be designed by a structural engineer, it's gotta be permitted properly, stuff like that.
The only one thing I do wanna know on that, where it's all timber, it's lifespan.
It's what?
Lifespan of the bridge. You know, I mean, it's all wood. Lifespan of the bridge. You know, I mean, it's all wood.
You can speak to that.
Yeah.
I mean, is it a twenty-year bridge?
I would imagine it's more than fifty, I would imagine. It's, they are, it is treated timber, so they, you know, drive the piles in, and then they install a pile cap that basically spans across the, the top of the timber piers. And then they build, you know, the stringers across there, and then there's, you know, some decking on top. You know, so it's a fairly simple structure. And then there's some timber kind of abutments with wing walls as well, so...
But I, I've seen treated lumber that...
That's loaded in the concrete.
Huh?
Oh, that rocks?
It's right.
Well, that's what I mean. That's why I was just curious on, you know, in twenty years when this is up.
Yep, it's not, it's not a public access road.
Road too, yeah.
By the bridge, it's not ours. We don't have to worry about it.
Fire truck, it's our concern. We don't really care about the tractor-trails and the fire trucks.
Yep.
Put a ramp that way.
I can, if you'd like, I can have a little more detailed, you know, specifications on that. I can, you know, maybe you can bring in the plans.
Yeah, how many years it's designed for, what the loading is. I mean, they'll have all that.
Yeah, exactly. It's all on their, on their plans with the design loads are and things, so...
That's fine.
Perfect. Certainly, you know, provide some feedback on that. So that is one thing, and then the other part continuation of what we talked about previously was talking about the, kind of the gravel, the roadway, the perimeter road. So we've been talking a lot about the, um, the main access road through the project, which is this one here. However, this was, this perimeter, uh, road is what we were talking about last time. And we are certainly willing to, you know, construct that as a gravel road. And that was, this kind of goes along with what the Fire Chief's comments were. Basically, we plan to use onsite material to grade and construct this kind of ring road. And we're thinking that it'll be almost a, you know, I, I like thinking of calling it basically a, kind of like a ribbon drive. We want to see if we can get some, a little bit of a grass strip in the middle. We want to try to reduce the overall stormwater impacts from this project. So, you know, by minimizing the amount of gravel and, and things that we have on it, that's something that I certainly am hoping we can achieve. I kind of worked up a, a cross-section for that here, which I'd be happy to, to show. I mean, essentially, we're, want to look at basically a twelve-inch section of gravel and about a three-foot wide grass strip down the middle. I just provided a photo here of kind of what we're trying to achieve here, basically, something to that effect of, you know... A two-track type road, you know, it's going to be drivable, it's going to be stable. But certainly not for primary access. It'll allow emergency vehicles, you know, ambulance or, you know, pickup trucks and things. And, you know, we put enough radius on it.
Sounds though, then, that that, whatever you call it, that road will be bigger than the thousand feet of access coming in.
This, this road?
Yeah, the one you're talking about, necking down.
That's just an access road to go around the project.
Exactly, this is just to get to...
Just for maintenance or something.
This is kind of just for maintenance.
It's the whole, so the first, it's not like you have traffic in there.
No.
It's not a populated place, right? So the, the whole thing is really a maintenance road.
Exactly. This, this part out here is the part where I think the Fire Chief was concerned previously because we were, we wanted to just do basically grass, which, okay, we understand the issues associated with that. So this is one thinking kind of a two-track road. And again, this is more for, you know, maintenance and indoor emergency access. If you had to get, you know, ambulance or something out to one of these more remote areas of the site, you could certainly be able to drive around this area as well. But this is intended to be the primary access for construction, you know, that's where the heavy, you know, traffic is going to be coming in. Most of it will be concentrated here. Then obviously, for any basin maintenance down here, one of the things, last time we talked about was, was expanding this kind of turnaround, and I did do that. I, I expanded this quite a bit so that a large, about a forty, again, I ran it for a forty-one-foot fire truck turning around. It's kind of like almost a hammerhead type configuration down here. And then you could get down here if you had to to get some maintenance for that basin as well, so... So that's another thing. I kind of wanted to provide a couple photos just for the, the board's knowledge of some other similar projects. This is a project that we actually just were working on up in Winchendon, Mass. And it's a very similar scenario to what we're going to have in terms of the access on this project. It's essentially about, you know, it's going to be a similar width across here. It's about thirty feet or so. But similarly, we had an abutting property right here that we were kind of tied up again, so we did have wetland constraints on this side. So they were able to kind of widen that out with like a crushed stone tracking pad. And that's kind of what we're trying to emulate here with this access. And then this has been working relatively well on that site. And then just some general other photos, I always wanted to show kind of what the prepared solar, you know, project site would look like. Again, this is the same project up in Winchendon. After the, you know, the initial grading of the array area has been done, they've kind of smoothed it out, put some hydro-seed down, they're ready to put in the screw posts for the racking system. I want to just pass that around. Again, another similar project out in Rutland, Mass. Kind of showing the prepared array area, ready for the installation of the rack, and you can see that being built. And then kind of more of a sequencing thing, which I know was, you know, a concern of the commissions as well as, I think, you know, Bill mentioned it in sequencing. This other photo I have here kind of shows a stormwater basin in the foreground here. You can see that they've built that first, hydro-seeded it, and then now they're working on building the array area kind of adjacent to it. So that's kind of the, the order of operations, if you will, in terms of, you know, building the basin areas first and then coming back. And, you know, once they get all the basins and swales constructed, that's when I'll... Grading here. As we, as I talked about kind of last time, you know, we have quite a few stormwater measures in place. We've got these two large infiltration basins here and here. We've got a number of swales and kind of settling pool areas with culverts to connect and convey that flow into the basins. So we've got these swales here that basically, this is like a sedimentation basin with a pipe here. So we've got swales kind of on both sides of the driveway here, another kind of settling area at the bottom of the hill here, just so we can get all, all that water collected and conveyed into our basin during construction, so...
Have you received the stormwater plan, Phil?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep, I met with them the other day, and we went through some of it.
Yep.
We're going to work, keep going, keep forging ahead.
So I guess in, in terms of the things we've talked about, are there any other kind of questions other than kind of, you know, access things? I, I think we certainly have enough room here where we can try to make that a little more substantive, get a little more. You know, again, I think one of Bill's comments kind of was with regard to stormwater is, you know, we may have to look at doing something actually down in this area. So this is where we kind of originally had our wetland replication area proposed to mitigate the impacts for the crossing. However, based upon, I think, the feedback of the, of the commission, the preference is to relocate the mitigation area or replication area onto the side, West Street side, so that you wouldn't have to cross to get to build it, is what I understand.
As well as DEP's comment.
Sure. So that's maybe, that looks like it's the direct direction that we're heading in terms of that aspect of the project. So that may open up an opportunity to do some sort of a small stormwater BMP here just to potentially, you know, just because we have now this extra runoff here from these turnarounds, we might have to convey that down into something in that area, so...
And, and the main reason I'm bringing it up is, I mean, and you wrote this too.
Yep.
Where, like, he does ask to try to have two accesses or this or that.
Right.
And honestly, it's not going to happen here.
Right.
And like on the other one, we had it where we kept one, but we had them open it up. Granted, it wasn't this far, up thirty feet with the turnaround. So there was an area where the vehicles can get in and out, and it's not going to happen all the time, but it only takes that once. And, you know, the construction of it, where the road's so long.
Yep.
You get two vehicles in the middle of it, you know, backing up five hundred feet or whatever just to get to a turnaround so somebody can get out of the way.
Yep.
So just asking for a little bit more on whatever can be done.
Yep, I think this is, this will be the area of focus. I think this is kind of a natural plateau here. So that affords us a little bit more.
It could also be a staging area too for entrance into the solar area for if something did go on. Somebody could, you know, you could park maybe two, three vehicles there while the other vehicles went into the solifum.
Yep, yep.
And it'd be out of the way of the road to allow, say, an ambulance to get in and out. And all, say, rescue was parked there or something, who knows?
Yep.
But I think that would be a wise, wise...
I can't imagine any scenario why our, why our ladder truck would go in there.
Me neither.
You know, we have forestry...
It would be rescue, rescue ambulance.
And forestry.
And maybe one or two cruisers. A lot of times, they'd get called at the same time, but that would be it.
The way the scene works, I mean, you're not going to...
No.
You'd have people staging in the staging area, or even in, even in an incident, you have people staging in an area in the vehicles that are needed to go in and out.
But giving them a little bit of room to do that would be fine.
So this plan is in progress.
Yeah.
Did you address any comments from Bill's January third letter?
Um, so the things that I have changed on this plan, again, in terms of efficiency, I'm trying to get kind of all the comments, you know, in before fully addressing with, with another...
Iteration.
Okay.
No, so, so we did add, we did add the structures to the plans. You know, that was a comment that came up last time. We talked about adding in the locations of the houses, so we've, you know, shown those approximate structures on the adjacent parcels here. So that is something that I've already incorporated.
Did you formally respond to Bill's comments after his comments? Appropriate response?
We sat down and went through them.
Yeah, we went through them, you know, so we are in the process of, of doing that.
Okay.
Got our response letter started, and we will keep that dialogue going and, and work through those. The majority of them, from what I can see, are more administrative in nature. I guess one thing that I just wanted to kind of mention to the board, there is, you know, it mentions, you know, the site plan requirement for a landscaping plan. As it is now, I guess we don't really have much proposed added in the replication area for that. So we were thinking of requesting a waiver for that if we don't have like any other planting proposed, you know. So that's kind of what we were thinking on.
But you did planting on the property line for the adjacent residential.
That's another, that's another thing I wanted to actually talk about. So we talked about planting. Another option, I'm wondering if the board is, would be amenable to this, is potentially doing a wooden stockade fence in lieu of plantings. We think it would kind of screen a little bit, a little bit better than the, than the, than the trees would. So we're thinking of potentially, basically from this fence corner, we were thinking of going with the stockade fence from this corner here, wrapping around, and basically going to this fence corner. So that way, we're screening the project from...
Have you had discussions with the director of order there about this fence?
Not yet, but certainly we can help.
And what's being proposed between the abutter where his barn is and down further by the front? What's being proposed for, you know, natural landscaping, fencing, or what's being, tell us what's, what's the thought on that?
Yep, so we currently don't have anything shown in this area here. We talked about, I think, with Bill, we talked about more of a, during construction in particular, kind of a more of a, of a physical barrier along the property line. We talked about this, I think, last time, kind of demarcating that. You know, right now, we currently just have an erosion control barrier, but we're certainly open to, you know, providing some, some sort of construction fencing to show that like this is the limit of work. You know, this is, we're not going beyond this point, so kind of establishing that.
I thought we were talking visual, the visual.
Oh, you're talking, yeah.
You know, like you're doing stockade fencing back there, what is proposed to...
Yeah, at this time, we don't have anything proposed. It hasn't been brought up at this point.
And you haven't talked to the neighbor about that yet, per se?
No.
It should look like a driveway.
There's not going to be anything there.
Yeah, so just as long as they don't go on the other person's property, but yeah, the orange construction fence.
The array's way back there, so...
The array...
Be like a long driveway going down. I don't know what you got to lens.
The array is not visible from West Street.
No, it's not. And we will not be...
But it could be visible from some of the other...
Especially during construction when you have a couple hundred tractor-trails come through there. It's temporary?
I put together this little kind of aerial exhibit. If you want to kind of, I have a few of them here. You can kind of take a look at them. This kind of shows that front portion of the site.
That's the house going in, Mike, right here. Coming in right here.
Yeah, once you, once you get certainly past a crossing, it becomes wooden.
Yeah, I guess there's only two houses there that would really...
Near the road, yeah. Nothing really distant shield or hide or put up a barrier for.
Can we get an idea of how many delivery vehicles per day during the peak?
Yep.
Would be of construction?
Yeah.
Sure. And, and obviously the hours that they'd be...
Yep.
So a little narrative, I think, would be appropriate to address that.
Yep, and you're, and you're, and our response to your comments, we do plan on kind of defining the work hours. I think generally, it's going to be the daylight hours, probably seven to five, seven to six, something, you know. Generally, in the daylight, you know, once, you know, the contractor will be out of there after, after that point, you know. So that'll be the primary kind of window of, of operations during construction. I don't know if Julie with, with Nexamp can provide any more com, you know, feedback on the, a number of trips. I mean, I know it's kind of, I think, fluctuates based upon, you know, when, when they're actually building the array itself. I think that's when they start getting more deliveries, you know. First, they'll get the deliveries for kind of, you know, the screw posts that go in, those will go in first, and then eventually the materials to actually construct.
And the workers, the workers have hours parking, and they go to lunch, or they leave the site. And maybe they can't leave the site, have to bring a lunch, you know.
Yep, yep.
We, we have a boil plate, kind of the hours worked and stuff like that that you can...
Sure, sure.
So, when are you looking at this actually being complete? I think you were, somebody gave us an estimate of the time that it would take to build the field and a certain amount of time to do other stuff, and then you got bad weather and stuff and...
Yep, so I think generally, I think four to six months. This is a little bit bigger one, so I'm guessing maybe more towards the six-month range just because of the size of the array and the amount of site work and things that they'll, you know, that'll all be done kind of ahead of the actual array construction. So I would say generally about a six-month timeframe for a, a array of this size.
Well, how many acres?
So, yeah, I think the array itself is about thirty-two-ish, but the entire area of the project is about forty-eight acres roughly, including like basically the limit of work line all around the entire project.
Magic.
Magic.
So we have another condition that we want to talk about?
Why don't we bring that up, yeah?
Yeah, I already mentioned that to them, and they indicated they don't have a problem with that.
All right, so we'll put that in.
Yeah, you can, yeah, you know, you already talked to them about the pilot, the pilot program. For a pilot program?
Yeah, absolutely. Can I just add, I would just, we're certainly, we enter into pilot agreements for all of our projects that we've built. So the only thing I would suggest is talk to your town council about, I don't know if you can condition another board to enter into an agreement.
No, we wouldn't condition that. We would have a condition that for your project to go forward, you need to have an agreement with them. So we're not telling you what the agreement is, but that's between you and them.
That would be between you and the selectmen, that wouldn't be, but it would be a condition from us that a pilot program has to be implemented for the project to move forward.
Yeah, I completely understand. It's just the, between you and the select board and, I would just check on that.
It's a pilot program.
Okay.
Revenue for the town.
Which the legislator wants to do away with the legislature.
Yeah, well, that's why we're trying...
Well, there's a loophole in the, in the current law that somebody's using to their advantage now, so. Don't wish pilot program.
I mean, the rest looks good.
Black and white.
Yeah, good, yeah.
Anything else to present?
Uh, I think that's all that I had, um, I just-
This is a public hearing, are there any questions from the audience? Yes, name and address, please?
Steve Bloom, 164 West Street, uh, right in the middle there.
Yep.
A couple things were brought up at the last meeting, was a culvert at the road for the wetlands crossing.
Yes.
And a gate to keep everybody out.
Yeah.
Yep. Yep, haven't forgot about those.
I, I missed the concom meeting last night, so.
Yep, that is something that we are going to be discussing with the Conservation Commission. As Steve had mentioned at, at the last meeting here, uh, there was an area near his barn here that kind of, it's a, kind of a spring, I think you described it.
Yeah, it's, yeah, there's water running out under that barn, you know, nine months of the year, that's why that whole area is wet up front.
Sure.
So I think blocking that up with a gravel driveway, it's gonna be a mess. Steve Zisk from Conservation's looked at it, and I know he's aware of it.
Yep.
So I know that's probably more their department than yours.
You're talking about culvert under that driveway too?
Yeah.
It's gonna be a crossing.
Yeah, it'll be a crossing.
An additional crossing.
It'll be a crossing, yeah.
Exactly.
Okay.
And, uh, the gate at the street.
Yeah.
You know, in response to, uh, some sort of a border on the edge of the field, I'm not overly concerned. It's not gonna be used as a road once it's built.
Right.
I am a little concerned about all the dump trucks and the gravel and all summer long running through there and filling my swimming pool with dirt, but-
Dust control.
Dust control.
Dust control would be nice.
Yeah, that's one of our conditions.
One of our conditions.
Yep.
No, no, just keep in mind, you know, we're not gonna be out there constantly, so if you called us, then we would contact them.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, as long as there's some sort of reasonable-
Call Bill and, and get somebody else.
Another, I would assume that they're not going to be doing construction on weekends, not for my own personal- I'm not worried about it for me, but I'm thinking about the water slide traffic on the weekends, because this is probably gonna be during peak. Uh, traffic on West Streets ridiculous on weekends, yeah.
It is. We have a lot of construction on Saturdays before, but, um-
Again, just a comment.
Yeah, but we can talk about that, yeah, good comment.
Okay, that was something I think we had talked about last time, like we are gonna put up some notes on here and some things for construction, like signage, just to let people know from either direction that there's an active work zone, you know?
And when the trucks are coming in and out, you might have to have a traffic person to help you doing that, so, just keep that in mind.
And originally you were talking about you were just going to be grinding down the stumps and doing everything up in the back, but looking at your nice shiny grassed area that you're planning on putting these panels on, and believe me to believe you're gonna have to bring in some gravel and do a lot of straightening up there. You've got fifty, sixty, seventy-five feet difference in elevation up in the back up there, that's up on top of the mountain, so.
Or a hundred and sixty, I think.
Yeah, okay, there you go, so the board-
It's a good climb to the top, yep.
Yeah, it's a hill, so, I mean, I know the board was asking questions last time about, you know, are you removing stumps, are you just grinding them down? Your answer was you were just gonna grind them down and kind of fluff it up a little bit, but, uh, you're probably gonna, you're probably gonna bring in trail loads of dirt, or you gotta go up there and it's, the board hasn't seen the property, but it's, it's steep.
Yep.
It's steep, but there's some big grinders out there, I've seen it done.
Yeah, I think they basically do rip the stumps out, they'll get a pile, I think they chew through that stuff and, you know.
Do you anticipate transporting material in, or are you, are you gonna use existing material on the site after, for the grading to be?
So, the idea, so we're trying to have a balanced site, we're not trying to, we're certainly not intending to bring any material offsite. We're trying to keep, work with what's onsite, so the grading that we've done here is attempting to balance out the site.
Okay.
And, you know, we're gonna have import of material to build the gravel road itself, they will, you know, bring in that, you know, good gravel material. But the rest of it is gonna be smoothed out, you know, they're gonna basically smooth everything out so that it's within the tolerance that the, the racking equipment can support, and they're-
Um, one final question, may not be the board's issue. In the field, uh, there are two small buildings that are falling in on themselves. I feel that if they're not addressed now, they never will be. Can we make some sort of a provision or a-
On, on their?
On their end, on somebody's end?
Are they on your property?
Yeah.
They're on this exist, yeah, they're on that property.
Yep, there's one here, and then there's one-
You stop what you're asking?
Yeah, they're rat traps, um, and the roofs are falling in on them, and, and, you know, this property's gonna be set up as a solar farm for the next twenty-five years, which means it's gonna be, they're, they're not safe.
Right.
They're very small buildings, we're talking maybe a fifteen by twenty foot building, and the other one might be twenty by twenty, and they're-
What's your plan, are you planning to get rid of them?
We, we can, we can, we can put out some.
I think the only concern they had, I did raise that with them, was that it's in the buffer zone, so it'd be a conservation issue.
They're already there.
They're kind of both standing right in the middle of the bode, yeah, they haul the grass.
That's where it now. No, the, they're already at conservation.
Yeah, okay, but they haven't addressed that issue yet.
To take them down.
Have they addressed that?
No.
I'm gonna ask them.
Now, both of those-
They're planning to leave it.
We got half, half the board here.
Yeah.
No, one of the thirty-three years.
Right, so this one, this one, uh- This building is outside the buffer zone, this one is just inside the hundred foot, so we can talk to them about that, smaller one here.
Yeah, they're, they're kind of up in the middle of the field, and they, you know, they mow around and everything else. It's just a small little gambrel barn, and then another small little shed that was hauled up from downstream. You know, like I said, they're, they're in tough shape now, they're gonna be worse in twenty-five years, so let's talk about it now if we can.
Yep.
You can knock down the one that's sitting out of the, out of the wetlands.
It's in the buffer.
So just add a note saying to be raised on both of those.
Yeah, and I wanna say the one that's further in on the property is, is actually a building that was rolled in on a trailer and dropped there, so it's, it's, uh, probably sitting up on cement blocks, I don't think it's anything with a foundation or anything like that, another one's just a small, uh, barn, so.
Yeah, one of them's outside, this one's outside.
That's outside the buffer?
Yeah. And then I don't know where the other one is, over here somewhere.
Yeah.
Yep, one of them's raised.
The other one's kind of buried under that tree line, so you won't see it.
So just barely, is it in the buffer at all?
This one is, this is the hundred foot buffer line, it's just the corner of it is-
Oh, I see it, but it's in a cleared field.
Right, this one is more out in the open than this one, which is kind of, I think, tucked in there a little bit more.
Yeah, that'd be a big concern.
So we can condition that for our order to remove.
Is there a house on that property?
No.
It looks like one of the buildings is actually pretty close to this proposed turnaround system that you're trying to put in the middle of the field.
Right, yeah.
It's probably gonna be, one of them's probably gonna have to come out anyways. Because based on the footage that you have over there, and the fact that Bill wants you to put in a, a wider, uh, road there, you're not gonna have enough, you're gonna have to take the building out anyways.
Concom, condition it.
On one thing, and you're probably, it would be destroyed anyway with that turnaround.
Okay. Anything else, Steve?
No, I think that's about it, like I said, I think he's, he's heading on, and he's trying, so.
Yep, okay.
Any comments on that fence?
We'll be continuing it to the next meeting, so if, if anything comes up.
Yeah, I mean, as, as far as the stockade fence up in the back, that'll, that'll be fine.
That'll be fine, okay.
You know, I, uh, you know, I don't know the life expectancy of a wooden stockade fence.
Yeah, that would be my concern too, but-
As opposed to a chain link fence, which is gonna be more of a, of a permanent security type of thing to keep things out. I think the wooden stockade fence in ten years is just gonna start falling in on itself, and I don't know what maintenance program would be put on that.
You'd have to have a maintenance condition for that in here.
They put a composite fence too, it's more money, but-
Yeah, I'm sure they don't want to do that.
In the middle of the woods.
I mean, I think it'll work out, when, when you come back, what, you guys can work out.
The whole thing will be enclosed with a chain link slash this wooden fence, and certainly, you know, Nexamp wants to keep that maintained to protect the facility, and then in terms of safety.
It's a liability issue.
Some sort of vinyl, what about a vinyl, like, within the chain link?
Yeah, even if you vinyl slide the chain link fence-
The strips, the slats.
Yeah, yeah, instead of the wood.
That's even a better idea.
Camouflage.
Right, I mean, just whatever fence you put up, just plan on it being a fifty year fence, don't put up something that's gonna fall down in ten years.
That's a good point.
If you wanna slap the, the fence you're proposing to put in, that'd probably be a better idea anyway.
Yeah, use like either like brown or dark green type, something that'll kind of blend in with the surroundings.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay, so that was just to preserve future sales of, you know, my property up in the back.
Yeah.
Nobody wants to live in the end of a cul-de-sac with a solar farm in the backyard.
Right, I see that lasting a lot longer than a stockade fence would without a maintenance program.
Oh, they're quiet neighbors, sure. But it's just, it's, it's gonna look like, you know, Planet Mars up there for a while, because, you know-
Yeah, it will.
It's gonna be just a barren-
It's gonna be different in five years.
Few years, it'll be growing back up again, hopefully, but-
Right. And I'm assuming the field where your driveway's going through, that nobody's mowed since Norman's bought the property, nobody's gonna mow that in the future either, so that's probably just gonna be knee-high and just keep going the way it's going.
Yeah, and have this area in here.
Okay, I'll lift woodchucks like it, so that's fine. Yeah, I don't, I don't see any problems with that, so.
All right, oh, like I say, we'll, we'll be continuing, so, come on back to the after.
I got one question.
Go ahead, Mike.
On grinding of stumps, you had just said, no, you grinding stumps in place, or you pulling stumps and grinding stumps?
I think they're gonna pull them out.
You're gonna pull and grind, okay.
Pull them out, yeah.
So you are excavating all the stumps out of the soil?
Exactly.
Does that accelerate any kind of potential erosion of the subsoil? If you start to pull out stumps and roots versus grinding in place? Just a question, I'm not a, you know, weapons engineer, but-
Cause you see more at half, right?
Yeah, and basically what they're gonna have to do is they're gonna have to, they are gonna have to remove like all the stumps out, they're gonna have to remove all the surface stones and things, and more likely than not, they're gonna end up having to basically put those, like, this area is being cleared, but not grubbed, because this is only for shading, like this whole strip on the perimeter that we talked about. So essentially, usually what they do is they take all the, those big rocks and things that they don't want, you know, they can't, don't want that in the array area, so they'll usually kind of put those on the edge here to make sure that they're out of the way, and then they kind of will smooth out the topography, and then they'll come back and they'll basically kind of spread out that kind of, you know, mixed up kind of topsoil, subsoil material. They kind of frost that back on the top, and then it's ready for the ground screws, and then they come in and they work their way through the site and install the-
So all stumps will be ground on site?
That's what I understand, yep, they will all be.
Okay, Bill, any questions? Anybody, this is a public hearing, does anybody else in the audience have any questions or concerns? All right, you wanna be on the next meeting agenda?
Yes.
It's two weeks, you're gonna have some progress.
Right, Tracy.
Okay. We mean, we need the second and fourth.
I asked him.
Okay, I guess we're gonna expect the stormwater review sometime soon.
Yep.
Okay, all right.
So you want two twelve or one twenty-two?
Next, next meeting?
What are the choices? One twenty-two or two twelve?
The next concom meeting is, is it, it's the beginning of February, right?
February four. The Monday, February sixth.
Yeah.
Yeah, you might want to come after that.
Got two twelve?
I think it makes sense to count.
I think it makes sense.
Yeah, I think two, two weeks is a little tight, that way we've got everything, we can try to-
Make a motion to continue the public hearing for Douglas Renewables LLC to February twelfth, two thousand and nineteen, at seven PM.
Second. Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike G. Yep, Ken? Seconded by Ken, all is in favor.
Hi.
Allies and staying, motion carries. Okay, we'll see you then.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
There is- There is a thing that Blackstone River watershed put out for, um, guidelines for solar, I'm just trying to find it right now. Did you see it?
Oh yeah, somebody said it.
That was here, uh, position paper and resource document, I'm trying to put it in.
I think Bill's got a copy.
Oh, here it is.
The guy that, um, Blackstone Valley, uh, Blackstone River watershed put out about arrays of solar farms and erosion and all that.
Yeah, didn't I send something out about it?
Oh, you sent it?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure you did.
Fifteen pages? Well, Katie Gray's had it last night too, and she's been telling us since we got the first solar project.
Ready, board?
Yep.
Next item on the agenda? Public hearing, Williams Court, Douglas LLC, application for special permits, I think duplex dwellings. Williams Drive lots one, one hour, two, three, three hours. Ready?
Yes, I'm ready.
Bring a big hat on. Hey, you guys?
She will come in.
I don't know.
All right, we ready?
Yep.
In accordance with MGL Chapter forty-eight, Section nine of the Town of Douglas zoning bylaw, Section nine point three, the Douglas Planning Board will hold a public hearing on the application for a special permit for duplex dwellings. Properties located in a village residential zoned area located off of William Drive, map one forty, parcels eleven point two one, eleven, eleven point three, eleven point two two, on map one sixty-five, parcels thirty-nine, and forty, Douglas, Mass. And owned by Williams Court Douglas LLC, two thirty Douglas Street, West Row, Mass. As shown on a special permit site plan for duplex development by Gary R. and Hanlon, Inc., one oh two nine Providence Road, Williamsville, Mass. Stated December eighteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Public hearing will be held on Tuesday, January eighth, twenty nineteen, at seven thirty PM in the municipal center, community meeting room, twenty-nine Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Copy of the plan is available for viewing in the community development apartment during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed plan should appear at time and place designated. Paris Lax Chairman, Douglas Planning Board, public hearing is now open.
So it's two separate loopholes? No. Maybe more. Five, six.
Six parcels?
Yeah, uh, yeah. Oh, excellent.
I have those as a P O, I'm sorry, some of those too have on the list.
I would suggest a word, Doc, so town council can tweak it if they need.
I know that's something that, um, we're still applying to Dr. Haddock, so I can try to request it from him.
Sure.
I have two copies of the plan, that's there.
Excellent. Thank you.
For the record, John Federico with Gary R. and Helman. Today I am representing a Williams Court Douglas LLC to get the approval for a six lot subdivision. We will be putting in a duplex unit on each lot. As of right now, the plans are currently under review with the Board of Health. And, uh, per some comments today from Bill Kundif, this revised plan, which will be stamped and resent back in, has added in the septic locations as well as some onsite grading. We did originally receive a comment earlier last week from the, uh, highway superintendent, asking us to add in a stop sign over here, that got turned off originally, so that's now shown on the plan. Does the board have any questions for anything at this moment?
Who's the owner of the property?
Um, the owner of the property is Williams Court LLC, or Williams Court Douglas LLC.
So generally, um, just so everyone understands, this is actually six special permit applications, because each lot will be recorded separately.
Okay.
Uh, there's really no guidance in the bylaws on what we're looking at with regard to this, other than the very basic requirements in Section nine point three of the bylaws, which goes over a number of items, which, Robert?
Uh, he's the lawyer, my name's Sean.
John, which John addressed in his narrative on the front end of the application on the cover letter. So, very basic, you know, they go over traffic, you know, it's a handful of lots, it's an approved subdivision, so you're, you know, theoretically doubling the number of vehicles, socioeconomic impact, um, and aesthetics, I think, is one. I can't remember, can you remember?
I don't recall it off the top of my head.
So, very basic, and really, this is such a small project, I don't see it being a significant impact, that's the bottom line. So what I asked him to do was show the topography on the plan, the originals middle didn't have the topography, so we could see how everything works. The septic systems, this is gonna be on septic, I know it's a sandy area, um, they should have no problem with that. is gonna be on septic, I know it's a sandy area, they should have no problem with that.
We've already done parks out there, all the park rates for each of those lots is less than two minutes, so, I mean, we're not gonna have any issues with poor drainage soils or anything.
What about water, public water?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, good. How many acre sizes?
Um, total, eleven acres, each lot will be about a little over half an acre or so, some of them might be a little bit smaller.
So how did they calculate the fee if it's ten, if it's six special permit applications?
It's six separate filing fees, and that's what they paid. Correct.
How much?
Five hundred each?
I'd have to go check, there's a file, but, yeah, they, they, the initial application was for one, and we, I talked to Jay, and Jay said, no, 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 this is six separate applications, so they supplemented the original fee.
Taxes are all up to?
Taxes are all, all right. So, so another thing that, that they're doing, and you can see on this plan, is Bob Sullivan wanted the ability to loop the water lane, main from, from the end of this cul-de-sac to Redding Landing over there.
Yep.
So they're willing to grant the easement to the town for those purposes.
Catch.
Yeah.
What about water getting down?
That's part of the subdivision, the subdivision grades for the road are all going to remain the same as well as the stormwater structure.
As you get closer to that northeast Main Street, the elevation there, if I recall correctly, it's about four ninety-two or so, so it does pitch in before.
That's why I was just, I was just taking a look at some of the numbers, that's why.
And then as far as.
If you're going down from here to here, yeah.
Yep, and then as far as some of those rear lots go, we tried to maintain as much of the existing conditions for drainage patterns as possible for it, obviously, just because of how we have to have the septic system sitting, we did have to bring in some fill for a couple of those lots, especially in the front area, but, like I said, we tried to do our best to keep everything as close to existing as possible.
They don't have the chance here. Correct.
Uh, that, that right there is just a glass river.
It's the width of the road versus the paved road. Right of way.
So this is what's paid?
That's what the pay is.
Bill, there's no existing easement for the looping.
No, but Bob indicated that you shouldn't have a problem with the next of other.
Okay. Okay.
So the things we're looking at is traffic toll and safety, neighborhood characteristics, social, social, economic, and community needs.
Yep.
I think that's it.
These rental or sale?
Uh, these will be for sale.
No sidewalk?
Again, I wanna, I wanna be clear about this, let's not confuse the subdivision, this is not for subdivision, these are the lots within the sub.
Subdivision.
So it's a special permit, you, they require a supermajority vote on these, and I would suggest that, if you do group them together, that you call out each separate application as part of your vote.
I know it's already in the subdivision, but in that subdivision, I'm just gonna ask about mail, is there a mailbox area, or is mail delivered to each house yet?
It's a, it's gonna be a public street, obviously, and I have not gotten that far within the town, it's up to the postal service.
When, when this came through, it was well before we had that requirement that the post office requested a mailbox, a central mailbox unit, so.
I'm throwing it out there.
He's absolutely correct, it's gonna be up to the, the post op, postmaster, and what they'll accept, this is a very small road, so I wouldn't, I don't think they have a problem going up the road, but, who knows?
And we're doubling the households from the original.
But if we do have a central mailbox unit, I would suggest that you install that prior to the house, that lot that it's located adjacent to, because it'll be bad issue.
We've had, we've had, I'm just bringing it up because it's been an issue before.
Rooting together, right?
Real bad. I mean, they might just say you're gonna have two mailboxes in front of your house, or they might say you need a central mailbox, I, I don't know, and usually, I know on the development, we wanna see where that mailbox is gonna go, but if it's individual, that's up to you, who occupies the house, that ain't up to us. So, I'm just bringing that point up.
Well, I'm happy to make whomever happy in the town with whichever happens to be, but like I said, I haven't gotten that far, didn't realize it was such an issue.
It will, it will be the postmaster's.
Decision, you know, it's not, not ours, but we always ask it whenever we start to see stuff like that.
I would be proud if you could talk to them sooner rather.
Yeah, and, and the only other thing is, there again, I don't know if they do, or gonna want it, but if they ask for a central mailbox, a lot of times the lot's for a lot, for safety, and people stopping at this time of year at night, or somebody gets out of their car, you know what I mean?
I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, it's not a lot, but it's just something where, you know, your wife can't know, and it's like a mailbox, and it's darker than you know what out there.
Yep.
Not good.
Yep.
So, we just ask that, be considered.
Can you ask, how many bedrooms are each unit?
Uh, we're looking at about three bedrooms per unit.
About?
Uh, yes.
Not more, not more than?
No, 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 I'm sorry, I missed, we are looking at three bedrooms per unit.
Then how many square feet per unit?
Uh, sixteen hundred, I believe.
Fifteen, sixteen.
That's reasonable.
So you're at review with the Board of Health?
Yes.
Right now, and the water line's already stubbed?
Yes.
Okay, so you're making another.
Water line is in, the road is in.
So one, so are you gonna do an extra connection for every lot?
We, we have two stubouts for.
Oh, yeah, two.
So there are six special permits.
Mm-hmm.
Just out of curiosity, in their, their first page there, they talk about ten special permit applications, they're there.
Copies.
Copies, that's how many copies.
So there is clarification on this application, right?
There's what?
There's clarification on, you know, what he's enclosed, this has been corrected.
That's what they originally submitted.
So do we have another piece of paper from the, after the December eighteenth, that they've submitted a correct?
I can go pull the file if you like, I'm sure, well, I shouldn't say that, I'm not sure if you created a transmittal for the supplemental fee that was corrected.
I did not do a supplemental fee that was dropped off, I believe, Bruce, you handled that in person.
I've been trying to train my staff to always require transmittals so we have that documentation, it's, I'm not always successful with that. The, I can, I can tell you, I sound the, assigned the voucher transferring money into the account for the town for all the units. For all the separate special permit applications, but I did charge one review fee because it's consistent, I'm gonna do one decision, basically.
Yeah.
Substitute the numbers and stuff like that, you know.
Anybody else have any questions?
I got nothing, just a mail.
Yep.
And a need, actually.
So, we did also get, at my request, a copy of the, as these are condominiums, I guess, they will have, each individual separate lot is a condo.
Yeah.
So they will have an agreement for the shared septic system, the, you know, responsibilities for the, I guess, exterior of the building and stuff like that, so.
Covenant.
They've provided that, and I've got town council, they'll need to take a look at this.
Are there any list of questions or anything that you're waiting to answer to or anything?
Again, the bylaws, there's, the bylaws are silent on what we're, we're looking at here, okay?
So you're not.
So the only thing we're going by are the five criteria or six criteria, that's in Section nine point three of the bylaws, which is just a general notation on findings for special permits, okay? He addressed those in the cover letter that you were just looking at.
Is this becoming a public way or is this gonna be made a private way?
It's a public.
It become a public way?
Someday.
This is previously approved.
It's already approved.
Oh, okay, yeah, 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 right. Yeah, I couldn't remember how you approved it, I tell this a while ago, so.
Yeah, yeah. And in reality, that's, like I said, my concern was postal, but again, that's hammered out, and as long as you're on a grants, if it's a community box with a light.
I can, I'm happy to go down and see the postal.
Yeah, that's what you gotta do, yeah. Appreciate it.
All right. Nothing else, somebody wanna make? I think we're ready for a poll, is everybody okay with?
Yeah, I'm just, I just wanna clarify, so the owner information is saying two thirty Ruggles Street, but you were saying that it's Williams Court Douglas LLC, which is listed on the assessors as the seventy-six church street in Williamsville.
Right.
That is correct.
So the, the application is incorrect.
Ruggles Street is my home address, actually.
Yes.
I, I can resubmit a updated application.
For clarification, because this is not correct, what we have in front of us. So this isn't correct, the fees aren't correct, the owner information isn't correct, just to let everybody know.
I can resubmit.
Cause.
He says that's his address, not the LLC.
How, how is that not correct? Let's go through this. What, what's not correct?
The fees are, the fees are correct.
Well, I don't have copies of the fees.
Okay, well, I mean, we never give copies of.
No, I'm just saying that the first page says that it was.
Owner.
And that's true.
Okay.
That's what they submitted originally, we addressed it with them, and they, and they supplemented it.
And then its owner, as the applicant, says Williams Court on your certified copy as seventy-six church street, Williamsville.
That's true.
The application, I'm just bringing it to the attention of the board, that the application is in for Westboro, says under owner information.
I, I don't necess, I understand, I don't necessarily think it's incorrect having two addresses, you know, the assessors have some, an address that they mailed the tax bill to.
The owner.
Correct, the other address is my.
There's two people, an owner and an applicant.
No, I understand.
Okay.
My understanding is they're partners, and if that's what the information they're giving us.
Okay.
For their applicant or.
The owner.
The owner's information, that's what we're gonna use for sending the decision to, and any kind of correspondence we have will be the address that they list on the application form, it's not gonna be the assessors' information.
Okay.
This is, I think they're saying that.
Few don't think it's a big deal.
Well, I think different organizations and different people have different addresses that they use, you can have the same person use a number of addresses.
Okay.
Is this, is this okay if we use this?
So, to be quite black and white about the issue, the seventy-six church street is a business address that has a lot of mail coming into it every single day.
Okay.
So Ruggles Street is my own thing that I check myself every day.
Okay.
If something needs to be answered, you're better off with the Westboro.
Okay, all right. I just wanted, because the fees are incorrect, and the, you know, I'm just looking at what we have in front of us.
See, collect them.
Right.
We don't have it in front of us.
I'm just looking at what is in front of me right now.
Correct.
That's all I'm saying, and now I'm looking, now I'm looking, 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 cause one thing is off, so now I'm looking at all the pages.
I wanna reiterate, I, I'm not involved at that level when it, when paperwork comes in, I have instructed my staff to never accept anything without a transmittal, so we at least have that. And it doesn't sound like that happened in this case.
Okay.
But I can tell you, I did sign the deposit voucher for the fee.
Double check on that, just make sure.
I don't.
I'd be happy to.
I don't doubt that the fee was paid, it's just I can only go by what's in front of me, and if the application is, this is in front of me.
Yep.
I'm reading this, so. I look at every single page.
Oh, I know you do.
I look through it.
I have no, no problem with that.
That's fine, that's fine.
That's fine.
Yeah, I mean.
So, having those questions answered, you feel okay with voting tonight, or do you think that you wanna wait for something else to come in, are you satisfied, or?
I, I've still gotta draft the decision, I started it.
I just hope we can close the public hearing and.
If the board feels like they have no other questions, I don't feel.
It's kinda cut and dry, yeah.
It's allowed by special permit.
Bill, do you, do you wanna?
No, I think John, John.
It is John.
I'm sorry, I, I, he addressed the comments that I did have, okay? So the only lingering thing is having town council give his comment and finalization of this document.
The Board of Health approval.
They're going before Board of Health.
It's currently under review right now.
Yeah.
Um, I think with the passing of Jim Malley, that that caused the review to get a little bit held up, but I know that as of yesterday, we did get one comment adding one or two dimensions to the plan.
Okay.
So I'm just waiting to see if there was any others for the remainder of the lots.
Okay.
Never stop sign set up down there.
Yep.
And if you wanna ask the audience, and then I'll close it.
Okay, all right, anybody in the audience have any questions or concerns on this project? Seeing none, okay.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for Williams Court Douglas LLC.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike Z. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries.
So, as a group.
Yep.
I can do a collective motion, so.
Yeah, you can, just call out each lot separately, and they're numbered here.
Right here, two.
All right, I'll make a motion to grant the special permits for duplex dwellings at Williams Court Douglas LLC, and the lots are William Drive Lot One, William Drive Lot One R.
Yep.
William Drive Lot Two, William Drive Lot Three, William Drive Lot Three R, and William Drive Lot Four.
William. Motion made by Tracy.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mike Z. Any further discussion? Anything, something Mike?
No, I thought I was seconded.
Oh, I, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. Seconded by Mike G.
Okay, G.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. Supermajority, we need the existing board that's here right now, right? Bless is missing, that's the only.
That's it, yeah, but you got it. So I'll draft the decision, I'll share it, and so will feedback, and, and then we'll have it for the next meeting.
Half plus one.
Do you ever include yourself on these sorts of things?
Sometimes you vote, sometimes you don't.
Yeah.
If needed.
Yeah.
Six needed, six needed, I, yes, I, I voted yes, tonight I voted yes.
You only need five, right?
Yeah, half plus one.
Oh, half plus one, wait.
So we don't even need you.
I'll, I'll vote anyway.
Yeah, we do.
In terms of anything for the applications or stamp plans, will you need to see?
Yeah, you need to set final set of stamp plans.
Okay, as far as exactly how many we need for that.
That's what my position is on Concom.
And how to put that signatures, we have to sign.
Yeah, I mean, if I don't see it, we're gonna see it there.
Yeah.
And then would you want the mailbox location shown on that file, stamp side, or?
That's not a condition. Part of this.
Okay.
The chairman. But seriously, we've had troubles with that. I understand.
Yeah.
Yep, but there were only. Bruce.
Bruce.
Four of us and Ernie.
And I have the same.
Who did?
Laura.
Oh, why not, come on.
Who's that one? One owner of the state court.
It looks like a bunch of-
We could talk about it later. You know, I'd love to.
Like a bunch of heads.
Winter on it. Have a good deal.
Let's do it.
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I would have it solidified.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Should be.
You guys, this is on.
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, you can do that.
You guys should be submitting, I had a call from them, waiting to get something.
I don't believe so. Call us something. Thank you, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you all for all. Good night.
Then we're going into discussion.
Thank you, says that was the bill?
Um, we could take number two, two or three. So, I'll take two, two and or three.
This is a young one.
Three is here too.
Ready to go, Bill.
No, let's take two. Let's take two.
Okay.
Alright, we're gonna do number two onto discussion.
Alright, in your packet, you should have a, if I can find it, a letter from Andrews survey regarding-
Yep.
White and Roseboro Estates.
Yep.
Yep. This was an ASBIL they did a while ago.
On the Hill.
On the Hill, this is how-
I know where it is, yeah. It's a good job.
Douglas Hill Way.
Oh, take a number three, okay, you're doing that, okay, we're number three then, not number two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, number three.
You tricked me.
Who's they? The infamous they?
Uh, the-
Number two.
Number two is White.
No, number two is-
Yeah, number two.
I got number two listed as Wazeasola Project Evergreen Estates. Number three is White and Heights on my end. I've got White and Heights.
Take that one out. Alright. White and Heights.
Oh, yeah.
Mine's, mine's listed the other way.
Oh.
I don't know why.
Is that the help?
We'll take, we'll take, we'll take that.
I don't know how that-
Number three on mine, and it's number two on everybody else's, so go ahead.
Let's just do something.
Yeah, alright. So we got a letter from Andrews, uh, asking for, to establish the bond. We've, we've gotten two numbers, and again, this is back in 2015, I did an estimate, and I came up with a hun- roughly a hundred and ten thousand. Andrews' estimate was ninety, ninety-eight thousand. So we're not that far off, like I am in some other cases.
It should be an updated one though, Bill.
And-
The seventy-eight. That's the one he just sent you. That one's older, there's a newer one with work that we've already done, like the access road, that's done, sidewalks approved.
Oh, I'm sorry, do you have a copy of that?
I do.
Thank you.
So, yeah, that's the first one that we had sent to you, and then you asked for a revision? Uh, they're both dated September 12th.
Okay. It's usually the same date on both different ones.
You just cross it out and subtract, you know.
Is this a request for bond money to be rescinded, or is this essentially just a change in the estimate?
Re- rise.
Yep.
Re- rise.
Okay, so seventy-eight, um-
Again, back, back in 2015, my number was a hundred and nine thousand. I have not gone out to confirm this estimate, um, and what I believe they are asking for, well, actually, I'll let them say what they're asking for, um, but I also included in your packet for your information another document, that was a subsequent amendment to the agreement, the, the decision, the modification.
Mm-hmm.
And it looks like this.
Yep.
And I think this is going to be pertinent for our discussion, so. So with that, I'll, I'll let them speak.
Good evening, Board, my name is Jennifer Gavitz, I'm here on behalf of NQOW, who is the entity that is looking to purchase this property here. We're working with Roy Canari, who has all of the approvals already established. Most importantly, we do need the surety amount in order to get the building permits that we've been discussing, actually obtaining, so we need to know what that surety amount is, so that's certainly very important tonight to try to ascertain what we can agree to. We are here to hopefully get, on the agenda to get a building permit for two lots. The amendment that I believe was just circulated does provide for a release of two lots. This particular amendment, I believe, is where things stopped, so I've put together releases, of course, it's contingent upon whatever the surety bond amount would be. So we're looking to, NQOW, I think, is looking to establish themselves in the community, they want to be there to introduce themselves and be a working member with the Board to make sure that what you envision being necessary, they're able to comply with.
Thank you.
So the difference between these two estimates are the lines that are crossed out, is that what you're saying?
Now you do, it's been, what, completed or don't apply?
It's already been completed, and we had provided a construction observation report, I think you were gonna send an engineer out on behalf of the town as well, but I don't think this is of any value in just seeing-
I mean, you're certainly welcome to circulate it.
Yeah, true. Yeah, that's one of my concerns, is that the project's been sitting for a while, and I haven't been able to look at it for a while, I don't know what the deterioration of the road or-
That's the, that was from September.
And this amendment, is it more like a modification of the, um, development, cause it's subject to forty-eight?
This looks like a special permit, yes.
Requiring a hearing?
I'm not sure, I'd have to do some research on that.
If you're under forty-eight, filing with the town clerk and recording.
Is essential.
I would say that you have to be notified if you're under your twenty-day no appeal and all that. Is that why you're referencing the forty-eight?
I don't, I-
File with the town clerk.
I would just be at forty-eight. I don't believe it is.
Special permits under forty-eight.
This amendment is subject to the requirements of general law, chapter forty-eight must be filed with the town clerk and be recorded, so that would trigger me to think that there's a mechanism for-
So we only have a copy, so I assume you have the original of this?
I do.
Okay, so the question, I guess Tracy's asking is, has it been recorded?
Was not recorded, because when I brought it to, um, the Registry of Deeds, there was something on it that they didn't like, and so they turned me away, so I just never followed through to-
Finish it.
Certification that there's been twenty days past in the town clerk. No, it wasn't, it wasn't anything like that, I can't remember what it was, but it just, it wasn't to their liking the way that it was, it-
The format?
When was the last time you took it?
Probably a year ago.
Yeah.
And they, I'll confess, they've been asking me to go out, they've submitted this in, what, September, I think?
Yep.
And then I asked for the ASBIL plans, and we've been going back and forth some time. The general disagreement, and this is a document that I just located today. The general disagreement is, I was under the impression that they need DHCD approval, Department of Housing and Community Development approval-
It's going to be-
For the affordable units before the project can be considered a project, a flexible development.
Yeah, flexible development.
And, so.
Have you received any of that? Do you have that approval yet?
We do not, so I've been working with somebody from DHCD, submitted application, there's actually a regulatory arrangement that was circulated back in 2015 that was redlined, Rick Jay and Lori had worked on it together, so I'm sort of incorporating that with the representative that I've been speaking to, and I'm trying to find a lottery agent that's actually willing to service just one affordable unit, because that's what the plan would require. I was also informed tonight that one was obtained in 2015, that's on retainer, so I think we've also satisfied that, so we're able to now make some, some progress.
So if you look at, under decision and conditions, number one B, that's the section we're talking about.
Yep.
So, it's kind of like a chicken and egg. My, my understanding is that that needs to be satisfied before lots can be released.
Says first line.
Certain way it's reading, it's reading.
Um, if you read the second sentence, it does still provide for a bit of a contingency, however, in the event that the planning board shall release any lots on the paragraph A of this section, building permit for said lot may be issued for the lot so released, subject to other applicable requirements for the issuance of said building permit.
Which is why I was given that, because we went back and forth with Jay Tallman, and he said that it would be acceptable to request lots to be released while we were working on our, whatever we needed to do with DHCD, as long as it was overseen, that progress was being made on that, because it takes a little while for that to get done. And the agent said that we should not apply to DHCD until we were within six months of building the affordable unit, because of the whole marketing aspect of it, it doesn't work in this case to go in right from the beginning, because you can't get what you need until you're ready to actually build that, and the Board had given me the ability to build that as an eighth lot that we built, so it didn't work going to DHCD right from the beginning. I thought you had one unit on retainer. I have one unit, correct, I have paid a deposit on that, and that is the agent that said, so when you're ready, call me. In 2015? Yeah. Okay. Yeah, so she said, don't, it's not the time to do it. Because basically what happens, when you set that up with DHCD, they're looking for that to be marketed immediately, but you can't market something you don't have, so it has to be built, then you market it. So, it, it's, it's backwards, and we couldn't do it at that time. So the idea was, yes, start working on, you know, getting your building permits, start building it, but also you need to be working with town council and, you know, whomever to make sure that your, your permits are being done and everything filled out so that you can send that into DHCD, that's about a six-month process for them to approve that. Okay, so what's town council's opinion on the non-recording of this amendment?
I haven't asked that question. I mean, I can tell you, it's a requirement that any reference to, any special permit that pertains to a property has to be recorded.
Yeah.
For it to be valid.
I would agree with that.
I agree.
And then because Bill didn't go out to the site yet, or he didn't send anybody else consulting out to the site, let's talk about the bond.
Yeah, let's, let's look at it this way. We, we have a number and they have a number, we're gonna be somewhere in between that number, I expect, unless the stuff that I called for back in 2015 has deteriorated or degraded, where I need to increase some of those numbers. And, and the unit quant, unit values also probably have changed since 2015.
I mean, unit, unit costs.
The unit prices.
Did Andrews use your same unit costs from 2015, or did they update them?
No. The only thing that's updated is the fifteen percent contingency, so-
Ten?
Well, on, I think this one here for maybe Bill, that one was ten.
Yeah, but it's still fifteen percent.
But, yeah, this one here is ten percent. The one from Bill, it's ten percent.
It looks like he used the same, same numbers from 2015.
Same, yeah, same numbers. So.
And he has provided an ASBIL plan too.
Yep.
Did you take a look at it, that it shows the-
I think it, I think it's reasonably close to what the design was.
Okay.
Yep.
Eight-inch sidewalk gravel, gravel access road.
When they say gravel access road, you're talking to the one at the end of the cul-de-sac going into Roy Swenson's property, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, there's a little thing, and then there's the access road that goes around the detention basin.
Because I spoke with him literally the other day, and he said that's not constructed.
Yeah, I don't think that that needs to be constructed till the end, if I'm not mistaken.
But is that the gravel access road that you're, you're removing?
Now, the gravel access road is the detention basin, it goes around the detention basin from Wayneville.
Bill, did you get a copy of this?
No.
No, there was just one.
Did you get a copy of that?
He's got one?
That he does.
Yeah.
The fourteen square yard, no, eight hundred square yards.
I'm gonna go get my estimate. I've looked at it, but, you can keep it?
Oh, we have one, Bill.
No, my details.
Like this?
Yeah, I was gonna say, he's a nice guy.
No, you can just look at that.
Hold his notes.
So I guess the reference to the, let's just break it down, the gravel access road, that's eight hundred square yards. Where is that, on this ASBIL plan? That's been completed.
Well, you want to come touch it out?
That's around the detention point? Is that the road you're talking about?
Yeah, that's what we think.
Yeah, it should be around the basin.
Around the backside of it to the left.
Gravel access road.
I don't see nothing at all, right about an access road.
Do you have any pictures of what's been completed?
Can we see that?
Call our pictures.
That's in there. This is, and that's what they had done by Andrews, it's, had shown the road, he's got comments about the condition of the road.
Where's the sidewalk?
I don't know, this, this is a shallow excavation.
The sidewalk's on this side.
Pipes with the wire on it, and the pipes-
So this isn't an ASBIL?
That's not what, I don't think Bill asked in for a full ASBIL, because he was looking for some of the drainage information. He wasn't looking for the full, because it's not finished.
Yes, significant overgrowth, but then a certain amount of-
It's a progress plan.
Yeah, it's a progress plan, so he wasn't looking for anything.
As of December, so as of December, there's no sidewalk, there's no access road.
So as far as, as far as the bond amount is concerned, we're trying to look for these crossed-out items.
That's what I'm, I'm trying to say.
That sidewalk subgrade.
No, not shown.
What does that say?
Nope.
It wasn't, yeah, Bill didn't ask him for that. He was only looking to find out the drainage, like, you could ask Bill, but it was, had to do with the drainage, not the full project. Well, if it was an updated progress ASBIL, he probably could have shown where he's eliminating the items.
Who crossed those lines off?
Me.
You did?
Yeah. I sent it to Steve and I, and to Bill, I said, no, we've already done these.
Okay, can I make a suggestion?
Just for the record, I mean-
Through the chair.
Please, yeah, yeah.
Have your name.
My name is Bob Pace, and I'm the prospective buyer, okay?
Yeah.
We've been trying to move this proj- project along for six months. Let's, let's agree it's ninety-eight thousand dollars. Let's just agree.
Okay.
Okay, and we'll come back and, and we'll give-
Get a bond reduction?
Right.
Okay.
And that's not-
Alright.
Yeah.
Settled.
Let's not lose the sleep on that.
Okay, ninety-eight thousand, ninety-seven, nine oh two thirty-eight.
Before the scratch outs.
Okay.
Right.
Makes sense, and then you can reflect the changes, and then you can go for acceleration.
And do you know the answer about this?
My, my only issues with this is I want to update the numbers to current Mass Highway Design values. But can we, he's agreeing to come back for that reduction, you could have the updates and maybe reflect that, and there may not be any...
But that, this, Bill's, Bill's...
Okay, I don't, I'm just throwing up.
Aaron, Bill's estimate was 100, almost 110, right?
Correct. 109. Is that 2015?
The 97 still is 9,000 off of that, so.
Right.
So, it's up to me.
So, so, in concept, I'm okay with the board agreeing to taking something between mine and theirs.
Okay.
Updating for current dollars.
Okay.
And then confirming some of those items that are omitted. And then, based upon that, I'll come up with a spreadsheet, I'll let Andrews review it, we'll come to an agreement. And then, what is today, Tuesday? This week? Okay? And, and then, basically, we'll establish that, I'll call you in to sign the surety, you don't have to sign it, you can vote that as a directive, that process, if, if you agree with that approach.
That's fine.
Yes.
Then a week or so. We'll have the dollar value, and then the lot releases is a different matter that you have to take up yourself. Now, again, the only reason to post the surety is related to the lot releases, so...
I'd like to get a, a good opinion on what, I mean, like you said, chicken or the egg, it's one of those tough deals on that.
Well, I think we, the problem is that document is not recorded.
Right.
So we have to go by the original decision. What is it recorded at the registry? Right?
That's, the originals is recorded at the registry.
So, this was the decision, were these items A and B in the decision?
Yeah.
Yeah, of course.
Okay. So we do have a discretion, it was discretionary.
Here's the five, and this, there's the two.
Those whole sections.
I mean, I'm fairly comfortable with that document, outside of the fact, I'd have to research if we had a public hearing, or we didn't. Town council clearly was involved in that.
Yeah.
There was no public hearing.
Okay, so, we did talk to town council, and they participated in this process.
And he said it was fine because it was an administrative-type thing, rather than, we weren't changing anything. So Jay said that it would be fine because it's, it's more of an administrative-type...
What were the administrative aspects of it?
The fact that we were looking for just building permits, we weren't actually changing anything within the subdivision, the modified plan, we didn't change anything within the plan. So it was just a request for building lot releases.
I don't understand. What's the difference between, what's, what was amended? Dragged my memory.
Oh.
It's been a long time.
One would be that, you know, according to the decision, you have the information in there about DHCD, the second is conservation.
Yes.
So he was allowing us to get a couple of building permits before we went to conservation and finalized things with them.
And you're only, you're only asking for a couple of two, before you do both of those things?
Correct.
And our decision said that you had to do the, you had to deed the five acre before you get the lot.
Correct, right, so this is allowing us to build, yeah, to get two before him.
Okay. Okay.
Good?
Yeah, I think it's...
You want that?
No. Thank you. I just, amendment, I, I'm concerned why it says, it says 40A and it's not recorded.
That's, again, I think Lori addressed that.
So I'd like to have an answer.
Yeah, we just...
Okay, so, Bill, you were comfortable with this? What?
I believe that by the, before the end of this work week for the town hall, which is noon on Friday, I will work with Andrews to develop a final estimate on the value of the surety.
Current.
Current numbers.
Current numbers.
And it likely will be between my original estimate and Andrews' estimate, in terms of dollars, which is 110 and 70.
No, no, he's agreeing to the 90, 90s.
Well, listen, if, if stuff's been done, I'll concede that. Yeah, that's not... I'm gonna make sure we're fair.
But the 7, the 97 is considerably higher than the 78, so he's agreeing to the 97.
The last time I looked, it was the number I had. Yeah.
So, would Andrews get that, he, he feel comfortable we could be able to sign that?
The releases, I have a lot release that's signed already in here from a prior board for two lots, lots one and two.
Yeah, I don't know if it was if I wanted to...
My name on that?
Let me check.
Yeah, and I don't have that, because I had prepared a release.
No, you, you don't have that, because we held it.
You were here approving out of an EBS.
Lot one and lot two.
Lot two.
No.
It's not dated.
That's the modification.
Uh, no, because we just signed it, we held out on date.
Yeah, yeah. I, I mean, it would be smart to update it since the board members have changed. We got Ernie, Greco, somebody that can't read, Tracy.
Probably Joe.
Do we have to vote on anything tonight, then?
Yeah, that, that, a vote would be that I will work with the applicant to establish a surety value by the end of the week, I don't mind if you sign a release that I will have Jay review, and instruct me to hold it until we agree upon the value. Assuming you're okay with that language in that amendment, amendment to the special part. You know, that, that's what this all hinges.
Yeah. Right, yeah.
What do you think? I think it's...
I would just ask Jay about that, about that not given.
Well, he'll tell you it has to be recorded.
Oh, okay.
Would you object to refreshing the document to...
No, we need to...
To, to address any recording issues?
Yes, that would probably be a good thing.
Right.
Yeah.
And so we could do that in two weeks if, in fact, there's an issue with, with the ability of, of that to be recorded?
Yeah.
Does that sound...
Yeah.
Well, it cleans it up, it makes it a lot.
Why sign something if we're not gonna follow through?
Because we really don't know what, what to, you know, record, you know, cross the Ts, off the Is, and then it's no problem.
So you want the, the amendment, the original amendment brought to the registry and recorded?
Unless there's some error that doesn't allow her...
Yeah, I can break it down again and see what they say. Sometimes it's just the person you see.
Yeah.
And they're having a bad day.
That is true.
That is true, it's happened to me.
Oh, yeah. I'll, I'll retry.
So then, then you can work out with the surety, then we know that's recorded, then come back, we'll, we're here in two weeks, and give you...
All the other requests, okay, this is more specifically to you, Bill, you know, we could have three feet of snow by then, okay, can you make sure that somebody goes out there and just does the walkthrough on that, okay, before we get a, okay, it's...
Yep, yep. I'll do it tomorrow morning.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Bring a video camera.
Thank you.
Okay.
Do you want the proposed release that I've prepared, or do you want to utilize...
Yeah, I would still have this board sign that and instruct me to hold it until we agree on the value.
So this has not been approved by Jay, I don't have what you have.
Jay's gonna review it.
That's a release, that's a lot release.
I understand, and I have a lot, we said sign in 2015.
So, so you're gonna sign another one now?
Sign another one now and instruct me to hold both of them until everything out of a bond of, uh, bond value.
And Jay's approval.
I'd like Jay to approve the release.
Form, the form.
Before you sign it?
Yeah.
Okay, I can call you in, then.
Yeah.
Okay?
That's a real go on sign.
Unless there's two feet of snow.
One and two. It's just not dated, but...
That's what I have, is for one and two, I just filled in the lot numbers, okay?
I'll have Jay take a look at this.
All right, let's do that. You can have Jay take a look at that.
Yeah.
Agree on the bond amount, and call us back in, and we'll, we'll make, make that motion. How's that, Tracy?
Now that Mary's thoroughly...
Essentially continuing with the issue.
So first, we need to make the motion for Bill to work with Andrew's survey to establish the bond amount.
By the end of the week.
By the end of the week, 12:00 PM on Friday, 11119. And then we're authorizing you to come up with a number, right?
That would be the, the surety amount.
The surety amount, and this board is going to sign up on it, or it'll be established between you two?
Once we have the release form approved by town council, and agreement for the surety, because we're gonna inform for that.
And he can release it.
Then I can release it.
It has to be recorded, too, right?
That document may be recorded.
Okay, that's my motion.
Second that.
As everything's clear, I think it's too complicated.
We have all that on tape, so I'll second that.
You got that, right?
Poor Mary.
Yeah, this guy.
Poor Mary.
All right.
Yep.
May I understand the motion?
Yep.
Okay. Who seconded it?
I did.
All right, motion made by Tracy, seconded by Zing. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries.
Thank you, boy.
All right, thank you.
Do you want us to come back, or do you want us to start with you?
We'll talk.
I'll get to work.
All right.
That can be worked out.
All right. Do you want to do Quasar next?
Number two or three.
Quasar.
Three.
Quartz.
Quartz, huh, sorry, again. Quasar, quartz solar project, Evergreen Estates Properties, Thomas Circle.
Yes.
All right, this is just discussion, all right? Is somebody here for that?
Yes.
Okay, name please, and who you represent.
Daniel Band with Cypress Creek Rentals. Just wanted to give you a little bit of information about our company, we're relatively new in Massachusetts. We've been working in Massachusetts for about a year and a half now. We operate in 12 states, we have more extensive experience in the rest of the Northeast, I worked in New York for about two years, and we're pretty excited to come to Douglas to work on this project. Right now, we have about three gigawatts of operating solar, so we know what we're doing. We wanna come with a good project, obviously, and we're here today essentially to go through the process, because our site is a little bit stranger than most sites, probably. It's not a vacant site, this is the former Evergreen Estates site, so it's at Zero South Street. It was approved for a flexible development permit, I think, back in 2006, if that's right? And...
Long time ago, yeah.
Yeah, it was a while ago. And, and what they did since then was, you know, they, they built the, the roads, they put down the stormwater infrastructure, and then I think essentially they decided not to move forward with the project, that was during the housing crisis. So what they're doing right now is looking to sell the property, we're looking to build solar in Douglas, so it's a pretty good fit. Definitely some benefits to Douglas and this project going forward. There have been some stormwater issues, as we've heard from the Concom. We can go in, come in with a new stormwater plan, help to remedy those issues, obviously take a, you know, previously abandoned site that has infrastructure issues, and, you know, put it to productive use. We're happy to pay pilot to, to the town, so we can negotiate that, assuming potential approval. But first, we wanted to come here and figure out how to rescind the flexible development permit, and as part of that, we've got a couple of attorneys in the room, they've written up a memo, you guys come up here, Brooke, Adam, and Mark, we'll see, just to talk through the process, just so we're all on the same page for how we move forward and get this project.
Okay. So, talked to you in phone.
Yes, you did.
And I think you've talked to town council, too, recently.
Correct.
We were able to catch up with Jay yesterday, me and Brian Levy, so he's kind of the lead, he couldn't be here tonight, but I am, and we tried to piece together the bits of the puzzle to unwind the prior subdivision approvals before moving forward with the affirmative permitting for the solar plan project. So after talking to Jay yesterday, we kind of, we sent around a package describing what we thought, with the attachments, you guys have that, okay? So I'm gonna hand around this, which is kind of our streamlined four-point, pass around this.
Sure.
Yeah. What we, what we thinking, what, I think Jay agrees with the right approach, I don't know if the words in his mouth, but I, we're talking to him yesterday, that's what it sounded like, is the right approach for unwinding the subdivision approvals and moving forward. So, the first few bullets on this list, or, or numbers, are basically the subdivision stuff, and the last ones, the solar permitting, which you're familiar with. So the, the first bit that we think, and we think we can do all this in one package, once we work through the solar design and all that, we can put all this into one package, give it to you, and work through it in a single hearing, hopefully, assuming, you know, there's no, no need to come back on the, the solar design and stuff. So the first part includes an application under chapter 41, section 81W, which is to rescind the recorded definitive plan that was for the Evergreen Estates, and at the same time, basically undo the covenant that was recorded about that. Now, the second, the second part, you know, this, this could be, so the endorsement of the perimeter plan, we just wanna get rid of the lot lines. Theoretically, we might be able to do this under an A and R process, but talking with Jay, it makes sense, I think, and, and we would like to get your endorsement on that before we go record that, to just sort of tie off any loose ends, make sure that you guys are, are on board with that, and then go record the new plan to eliminate the interior lot lines of the subdivision. And then part three would be to basically vacate the, the flexible development special permit, and there's no statutory provision governing this, so we talked to Jay about it, and we can work with him on the right type of document, but it's probably just a page saying, you know, basically a letter agreement saying that you, you revoke it or you, you know, you rescind that, that permit, or at least no longer apply the conditions to the, to the property. So those are the three pieces to kind of go into eliminating the current subdivision, the, the legal subdivision parts of the subdivision, and then the, the fourth part, we putting together the, the package, the plans and everything else for site plan review for the solar project. So, we just wanted to kind of put that out there before we get into the process and make sure that rang true with you, so we weren't working at cross purposes here.
So you, it would include site plan review application, and notice to all the others of the change in the structure of the development?
Yeah, absolutely, right, right. So it'd be an entirely new site plan, of course, for the solar project, because the, 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 the conditions that would apply to the subdivision don't, don't really make sense in the context of a, you know, a solar...
So the application under the 4181W, the rescission would also require a butter notification because that'd be a public hearing process.
Right. And so we, we were thinking of rolling all into the one, one...
And, and the concern that, that Ernie's kind of getting to is there is an immediate butter that was benefiting from road frontage created on the new way that will lose that road frontage. And I believe there was a, and, and it's not really the town's issue.
No.
But it's an issue for you to think about, and there was an agreement that, that they granted an easement for some stormwater drainage.
To the butter?
To the butter.
The butter granted it to the project.
I think I saw that on the plan for the project.
Right, so, so that's something you should be aware of.
Is that the north of butter?
It's, yes, the north of butter.
Yeah, yeah. We can work with that, just...
Yep.
And Jay has reviewed the process and the proposal, and he, he agrees that it doesn't require any kind of direction or vote tonight from the board, other than your agreement on the process, he thinks the process is sound that they've laid out to, to achieve what they wanna do.
Okay. It's a bunch of steps, we would, hopefully can make it as streamlined as possible.
I do have an application form for rescinding, so...
That's helpful.
How do you actually rescind?
It's safe process as a subdivision, but you vote to rescind the, the subdivision that was approved.
So your 81W rescission form, right?
Similar...
Rescinding that, you need filing out with the registry of deeds, too, so they have a copy of it.
They would record it at the registry of deeds.
Would you wanna do a separate piece of paper releasing the covenant, and then record that as well?
You, yeah, you would work with Jay on the form of that, and then he would authorize it.
Yeah, okay. Exactly what we're thinking.
In general, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm done.
In general, board, what's your, what's your take on it?
Yeah, on number three, leaving intact, you already completed conveyance of open space, that's all staying.
Mm-hmm.[1699.62] That's kind of a preliminary.
Okay, but like on, on the access roads and stuff like that and things of that nature, you're kind of getting a feel of what.
I think we learned one tonight. They didn't get other people's plans.
Yeah.
And you were thoughtful about that.
With the fire chief and all that, because there was a lot of comments from Hammer and Howells.
And there's an existing road on the site, as Dan mentioned. I think that that road's a double lane road. So I think the intent is to.
All built. At this point, I think we're leaning towards keeping that road.
Leaving it there.
Yeah, and we're just going to build around it. That, that may change, but it's unlikely to change at this point.
Okay. I mean, just so you know, you know, some of the concerns.
And the culvert's over the stormwater.
All your arrays, they're always fenced in. So as far as the conservation land, or that the open space is still going to be providing access to the town. You want to fence in that area where you can have access to the open space.
We, we would only be fencing in the solar array.
Okay. How many acres does Dean estimate is the array? You're still.
The array, so it's about five megawatt AC. That comes out to about thirty-two acres of the array, and about forty, forty-five to the fence in.
Okay. And then how many, how many acres is the whole site?
Sixty-four. Well, that sounds right.
It's pretty.
Under fifty, mathematically.
Yeah.
What?
So, I think, so the whole site was sixty-four, and then the, the conservation land was thirty-two, right? Do you know off the top of your head?
I don't. It's in the original.
Yeah, right in the chapter.
No, it's before that.
So this is the biggest pieces?
Thirty-two acres.
So.
The other ones are bigger than this.
Was it conveyed already, the property, the open space property?
I think so, you know?
Yes, it has.
Yeah.
All right. And how many acres was that?
Oh.
So the, the entire site is sixty-four, and then the open space was thirty-six point one-one.
That sounds about right.
Of twenty-six. So you don't have the forty-five.
We'd have to check on the acres. If we can come back, it, it is our intention to keep the open space, obviously, so.
Well, we, it's already been deeded to the town.
Yeah, no, there's no intention, I mean, and there's no real way to.
Change it, so they can't change it.
Okay, all right. Yeah, it's probably not as large as many acres as you think.
Rescinding the subdivision wouldn't impact that at all.
It would not.
Rescinding the subdivision wouldn't impact the open space.
No, right.
When you do open space.
We were part of that conveyance, so we're not, yeah, we'll have to go back and take another look at that.
Yeah, sure.
It's a piece of deed to the town.
Is there an existing ever?
Yeah.
So it'd be two separate areas.
Evergreen Estates. Yeah, but in conjunction with the approval of the, of the subdivision.
Well, I remember the, well, probably.
That's where we had the gentleman come in and was managing the project himself, and it was.
Right. He wasn't getting paid.
So it's the subdivision, or was going to be a subdivision, that never happened.
Right. Right. They had a washout with the storm drains and everything. That's right.
Quite a wide road. There's a lot of infrastructure built already, like the roads in, the sidewalks in, the derrages in.
So a couple of the comments, just logistically for them to think about too, in addition to what I already mentioned. We adopted new policies as a result of this project, one of which is obtaining surety anytime there's work done in the right of way. And as you may know, there's a pipe that crosses South Street. So the discussions with the original developer as part of the resolution to the trench that was put across the road, they were going to pave from where the new pavement ends to just pass their subdivision road entrance.
Right.
I would ask them to consider that as part of their project, since we have no means to finish that work.
Okay.
Because it was prior to any surety being posted for the project, so.
So as part of eighty-one W getting rid of.
That would, that would be, that would be something I think the board should think about.
So paving the site access, is what you're saying?
No, this is South Street, off, off Locust.
Right, where, right where your road is.
But basically the swath of it.
Correct. A little wider than that, because there's a pavement transition from when roadwork was done.
Right.
Which is just, just at the front end of the property, and then we were, the original developer and I had discussed carrying that to pass the road entrance.
Fifty to a hundred feet.
Yeah, it's, it's not that long.
Yeah, it's not, it's not a great distance, but it, it should.
It's bumpy there.
It definitely needs work.
Yeah, it needs work.
There's no doubt about it.
Could we get a map that shows the area, just so we know, you know, what we're potentially doing?
Yeah, sure, sure. And the other thing is the ongoing maintenance of stormwater. You know, there's a few structures that are off-site in easements, and, you know, we're going to want you to be responsible for maintaining it. Are you taking ownership of this, or?
We are.
Okay. So, you know, that'll be part of your operation and maintenance plan.
Okay, so this is an ownership and not a leasing job?
We have a, yeah.
Okay, that's different.
And then a deal where, like you saw on the other layouts, any houses, butters, all that, so we can see where people are, to what you're all doing, you know?
And if there's any, you know, the chain link, obviously for security, if there's any solid fencing, anything you're proposing, any buffers or anything like that, just.
Yeah, again, and this is one of those ones that's out in the woods that, the butters are only at the road, and it's nothing but woods in the back, so.
But I mean, that way, I mean, we're keeping it consistent, just to, so we all know, gives the same information.
All right.
It's good.
And I, I did hear you say you were, you were agreeable to a pilot.
We are.
Okay. Very good.
What does that Yoda say? You are agreeable.
And then just making sure there's still access to the open space line.
I'm very confused with open space.
It's already deeded?
I have no idea.
Well, they'll look into it, and we can address it during part of the rescission process. The, the few things that were lingering that we might, that might be impacted as a result of this, I know we had some parking spaces internal to the property for, for navigating the trails and, and stuff like that, that they should be aware of, and if there's a way that they can still maintain access, but I don't know if that's compatible use, you know, with people going up there and parking it, you know? But if it's still open space. Yeah, so, so just look at it, think about it.
They're taking notice. Well, the open space continues out to Chestnut Street, right?
It does, but there, there were a few parking areas over on the right at the top of the hill that we're going to access.
Yes, I remember that.
Maybe they could go to Chestnut instead.
Right, they got credit as part of flexible development. And they'd be closer to the open space, right?
Yeah.
For there.
I'm very confused.
My point was.
Yeah, it's beautiful back there. So, so if you would illustrate to us where that open space is and what that access is in Chestnut, and where parking could be put there instead?
I think that's open space, yeah.
Probably so, but just illustrate.
That was my point, though. If it wasn't going to be able to get access from this project, maybe they could do the parking area off of Chestnut Street, and something, or something like that, right, you know, access that area.
So there, there were two levels. There was open space around the residential portion, and then there was the portion that was deeded to the town, which was on the other side of the left one.
Right.
Yeah, they said a site sixty-seven, and then there's open space.
It's a lane right here, right? So that's going to be the deeded property?
And there's.
I'm not sure. This is kind of tough to see. So those parking spaces were like right here.
Yeah.
And this area around the development was open space, but this was deeded to the town already.
I can't be sure.
All right.
Yeah, we'll just have to clarify.
It goes forward.
You're going to own it, you're going to know.
Deeded by the definitely.
Oh, well, how many acres is it?
Yeah, no, we'll chase down the conveyance and figure out.
Mount proposed to be restricted for open space is sixty-four acres.
Yeah, the open space wrapped around the buildings and they still.
And they were still retaining that.
They were retaining that. And then the deeded land was on the other side of the left one.
And we only have, we only have the deeded land. The open space would have gone with the project for the people that lived in the project, so that's not really ours.
On the other side of the big left one.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Are they coming back when?
Sounds good.
So we'll have to drop our sets now. It's probably going to take a month, a month and a half. So we're going to come back, hopefully, in February.
End of February?
We may want to go back and forth with Bill.
Oh, yeah.
Sure.
Do you want to wait till you're at that point and then scheduled on the agenda?
Repeating every two weeks, right?
Well, we're going to, do we need to put something in where we already opened the public hearing?
No.
Just a discussion.
Oh, yeah, okay.
They have to file for site plan review, and then we'll have the public hearing.
The last one was.
So Bill has, the town has the dates? It's online as well?
Sure. We'll, we'll aim first of middle for probably the second February meeting.
Okay, all right. That's great. All right, very good.
Should be routine, you know, you know the issues.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll tell you all the issues.
Yep.
Welcome to Douglas.
Thank you, thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you.
Fuckers, eh? It's all right.
I know.
What's your next?
Well, why don't you do the ZDA?
I did, I did the last one.
I'm fading fast.
All right. Ready to get out of here.
You got a few more things. Are you leaving?
No, but I mean, I.
Yeah, all right. We got a couple more things, but you're ready, right? That's the ZDA application.
Number six, I say yes. If you need him, you need him.
What? Oh, oh.
I'll second that.
She asked for two last night, too, so I, is she getting four?
Probably maybe two for us, planning board.
Shouldn't have a blank.
Okay.
I think for us to work.
You can't grant laws anyway.
No, filing cabinets.
Filing cabinets. Oh, filing cabinets. Oh, I thought you said about boss.
Yes, I'm going to grant two.
That's a good question. I don't know. I think it's, well, yeah, we're all in that together.
Okay, okay.
If I need your approval and ours.
Okay, well, but it's four total.
I don't know.
Okay.
Let's ask Bill.
Hey, Bill.
Last night, conservation is a request for two filing cabinets. Is that for conservation? And then we're filed, she's asking for a request for two for tonight for planning board? Or is it, is it four filing cabinets, or is it two?
I believe, well, I think they're separate.
Who has the right to approve them?
I don't think it's the same two.
Okay.
So that's four all together, then. Two from us and two from conservation.
I think so.
Do you want a room for those?
You need a motion?
Upstairs, upstairs.
Yes.
We got to clear out.
I'll make a motion for approval of two legal sides filing cabinets for the planning board.
Second.
Lots of filing.
All right, motions are made and seconded, made by Mike, seconded by Tracy. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, and motion carries.
CM, CM-RPC mapping?
Well, he was talking, oh, you're doing his ZDA, okay.
Yeah. There's an existing shed that is over on a person's property.
Who?
So.
Yeah?
This one.
Oh, that's going to be a bigger picture of that.
Yeah.
Right.
It's two twenty-nine. So what's the request?
The request is to, for variance, but you have to prove a hardship that the shed can be four feet from the property line.
How long's the shed been there, sir?
Dan Dudley, who has filed it. Representative is Landon Hamer. Applicant is Dan Dudley.
Yeah, okay.
So how long's the shed on?
What?
This, this is an ongoing issue between the two residents. The people that bought the house.
Okay.
His shed is on their property.
Right.
They, they, I'm not sure if they didn't want it there, or they were concerned about insurance risk of it being on their property. Now, it's going to be concerned on it.
It should be, slide a pack.
They wanted it torn down or moved.
So he wants to move it.
He does want to move it.
He wants to rotate it. It's supposed to be twenty-five feet, and he must have rotated so it's four feet off the property line.
Okay, so it is, it'll be off the property line.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I got no problem.
I got no problem, Doug. Let him do it. Say to tear it down, let him do it.
Well, he, he mentioned that it had, the shed had a lot, he built it with his father or something, and it had a lot of sentimental value. He did not want to tear it down, but they didn't want it on their property because it was an insurance.
Which I understand.
He's not rotating it, gets off his property.
I mean, it's a tight little area. I mean, it's fine.
Prevent a legal.
I got no problem with it.
Anybody else have a problem with it?
Um, I don't know if it meets the statute of granting a variance, but if the board's consensus is they have no objection, then I will write no objection.
Yeah, right.
I have no objection.
Right, no objection.
So everybody else gets it.
It's a Schuster mansion.
That isn't being over the line.
Probably. Yeah, just a thing to be turned in.
But it's probably been there for over ten years, so.
Like the White House.
There you go. CM-RPC map. So how's the map coming?
We're going to wait for help.
Okay, well, I'm going to leave in about twenty-two seconds. We can't just keep.
Yeah, we, no, we're going to, we're going to wrap this up tonight and be the, Fisher Cut Bank, one of the others.
Okay. Can we do minutes?
I know Bill wants to do that, so let's, Bill, can we do this, Tracy has to leave soon. Can we do the CM-RPC thing?
Yeah. Let me try and get it up on the TV. Yeah, computer. Can we do this?
While we're doing that, can you do the private ways?
Private ways? I put in your packet a copy of Article five, section four of the general bylaws, which is the recently adopted language that town meeting had approved regarding private ways and the maintenance obligations of the town. So with your direction, I can, I can ask Matt and Town Council for their input on maybe perhaps modifying this to exempt projects either after a certain date or whatever is the best. I don't have the specific language, but whatever proves to be best.
Any project that has come into us as a homeowners association in the last twenty years?
Formal homeowners association.
Only, only private roads that were already being done by the town, nothing added.
These developers come in and request waivers from construction standards.
Right, for private way.
For private ways, and then we should not be out there.
Not taking them all.
This is not the same as some of the old ancient ways.
Right, they're ancient ways that were way before zoning, subdivision even was in existence. I have no problem with the ones we're already doing. Taking on any new ones or anything that has a homeowners association.
Right, right, right.
Isn't being our job.
Right, you bring it to the standards now, I mean, standards, or you're not.
Right.
So, so with your, with your direction, I'll, I'll move forward on that. Please. You don't, you don't get services if you want a private way, you want exemption from the width of the roads.
We gave you all these waivers so you didn't have to do all the construction, so it would remain a private way. And then you're going to come and ask us, now we have to plow and sand it and maintain it? No, not going to happen.
You can only do so much, Ernie.
Nice guy's finish last.
Always. Okay, CM-RPC, you might recall, we've been working with, with our local project funds that they give to towns. So they, they had developed this map maybe two months ago, and I've been asking for the board's feedback. And I think we're at a point where either we need to make a decision or say we're good as it stands. So I think the way we left it on previous discussions, there's two primary areas we're looking at, potential for rezoning. This is where property lines contain two different zoning districts, and should we, should we follow the property boundaries with this zoning modification? We're not talking about following through at this point.
Yeah.
For the people watching at home.
Thank you.
You know, we, we will reach out to the homeowners and the people that are directly affected by any change that's proposed. But at this point, we want to hone in on a few areas if, if the board thinks these changes need to be made. So the plan you're looking at on, on the screen, the red hatched areas are the properties that straddle two different zoning districts. The.
The lighter red hatched?
The diagonal red hatched, not the dark red, but the pink, yeah. So the, this area is up by Pine, Sand and Stone, North Street and Gilboa Street. I'm looking primarily at the industrial zone areas, butting the residential and possibly down at the intersection of Gilboa, because there's some residential that kind of creeps back and forth along Gilboa Street. It's a hodgepodge right now, is what it is, really. Right, right. So, so I think we don't want to take the world of all of these situations, but we want to focus in on a couple that we think might be prudent to rezone. And again, step one is identifying these areas. Step two is reaching out to the landowner.
I agree. I think move forward to reach out.
Well, well, we've got to identify specific properties.
Yeah.
So that I know who, what the changes are. And we're at that point where we need to make a decision on this.
Do you see where Gilboa Street? What, I mean, those areas there, definite. And I think up on the backside.
Where's Gilboa Street?
You got.
Gilboa Street's here.
North Street.
Vertical one?
No.
CDI or whatever?
North Street to the right.
The dark red. The dark red.
North Street to the right.
That's Gilboa Street, right there.
Down to at least Gilboa Street, if not even on the other side.
So for orientation, this is North Street going up.
There's Gilboa.
This is Gilboa.
Yeah.
Uh, classic envelopes here.
Yeah.
This is the, uh, Gilboa Pond.
Yeah.
So we have a commercial district in this area.
Right.
And residential creeps down like so. I'm sorry, it doesn't. It's a set distance back.
It's all caught in the middle of it, yeah.
That are, that are residential.
Yes.
Um, industrial is over here. This is one type of residential. The whites are a different type of residential, so...
And industrial with the commercial mixed in.
Industrial's up here.
Yeah.
Comes down diagonally.
So everything to the right of North Street, that's, I think, a hodgepodge. Down, I'd say to, to start down to Gilboa Street, that corner.
I'm sorry.
No, I can, no, I'm good.
To take a...
Whatever you guys want. Recall her in the map.
The, uh, North Street to the right from Gilboa.
Somebody was doing that to me last night.
Hitting, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, what's the specific one?
Standing right in front of me.
Which parcels are you looking at? Mike, just go up there and, and...
Mike, this is, you spearheaded this. This is your baby.
See here, see this one? You have what, one, two, three different zones in that one lot?
We have, so this property, this property here?
Yeah, two different zones, three different zones, yeah, two.
Well, this one has two.
Do the colors? Yeah, okay, that is a lot.
Yeah.
What's that pie in the center of it? What's that connected to?
I don't know what these colors mean.
This is the property boundary.
Is, uh, does the color signify a different zone?
It's hot.
Yeah, what is that? You got dark red, you got paint, you got...
Industrial, commercial, residential.
That's industrial one.
So there's industrial and there's four agricultural.
Different color. So yellow's residential.
The dark line defines...
Is RA.
Residential.
Yes.
Okay, I can't make that up for very, but I'll take your work.
Three.
Or it might be VR.
Three different?
VR.
Three or four different ones.
RA is white.
RA is white.
Right?
VR is yellow.
I'm seeing that, right? If dark is property line.
Is the hat, black. It would be gray.
Commercial.
And then commercial's the red.
Red line, yeah.
And the really dark, dark red down there?
Commercial.
Commercial.
So that is one.
Or industrial, commercial.
Commercial. Industrial is gray.
What's the, what's the proposal, I guess, is what I'm trying to get at?
Because 99% of it is industrial.
Right, envelope and all, all the way down?
So definitely we wanna change commercial on Gilboa Street.
Like, see this one lot? All right, the dark is your lot line. So you have one zoning there, zoning here, zoning there. Right in that one area, that's three different zone, three different...
And what do you wanna change it to, Mike?
Well, I mean, personally, I mean, most of it is industrial. So, I mean, whatever the majority of it is.
It should be industrial.
Yeah.
Red.
I said change the rest to commercial.
Oh.
Okay, to commercial?
Yeah, so you got red commercial and you have the hatch that is not commercial.
No, commercial's 500 feet off of, that's all commercial here.
What's the hatch?
It's a property, that's calling out the property line, the properties that straddle two different zoning districts. So the same owner owns that as that.
We should have started with this tonight.
Well, this table looks to next week.
I can't tell.
Let's do minutes.
I can't, yeah, especially looking at the drawing. You can't tell the lot lines.
So, I am going to put this again on the agenda for next meeting. I need specific direction from the board
Right.
on what parcels they want to change and from what and to what.
We just do, we just did this spot? Or is there more spots?
No, I, I think we're unclear on what the proposal is.
We'll stay there, but like that one lot up in the top corner. See that? There's three different zones in that one lot. There's your dark line.
You're in the one.
One, two, three.
So could trace out the lot.
See the dark line? That's the lot. You have one, two, three different zones in that one lot. That's what I'm looking at.
We should have focused on that.
Is that the one you wanna focus on?
Well, I mean, that's the start.
But what's currently there? What, what, is there a house there, a business, anything? What's currently there?
Don't know that place. Looking at the lots and then we'll reach out to what's there.
Yeah, we're not gonna be, we're gonna notify everybody. We just, we wanna tell CMR PC.
I need direction. They need to wrap up this contract.
They need to wrap it up. We gotta get this off.
So, so we gotta land the plane on this.
Yeah, definitely.
Why can't we send notifications to everybody just in that area?
We're not notifying anybody. We just wanna have CMR PC focus on that specific area.
CMR PC's gonna draw a map showing our recommended changes.
So we have to pick what we want them to draw that map?
We've taken it this far where we said, okay, CMR PC, identify lots primarily on the commercial industrial districts that straddle two different zoning districts, residential. Does it make sense to rezone that residential to fully commercial industrial?
Or vice versa.
Or vice versa.
So, pick one, pick one tonight and we'll...
So, if, if I don't get specific direction, I need to tell CMR PC we're done.
Yeah, right.
Well, do, do the whole red area with this red patch because that's, that's got your zones.
Has one, two, three.
That's on Gilboa.
Yes.
Yes, it is two. So this, well, here has one, two.
What's up North Street other than, I mean, that's not residential? This makes it look like there's a lot of stuff on North Street.
The property line, you can't see because the...
We don't want to...
It doesn't go to commercial?
Yeah, I think this, this is two owners, I think.
No, I know.
The hatching goes to the one owner.
Okay, I'm not sure.
So I think that's Gil, Gilford main or...
But there, one, two, three, so that should be the one.
Business going in and a residential.
But you wanna lose the commercials district here on Gilboa.
Don't wanna lose it. No, keep it commercial.
You gotta, you gotta keep industrial, commercial.
It's already industrial.
Well, this already has a use on, I mean, at this point.
Right, but, but the area is, is, it could get it all the same.
Industrial, commercial.
There's a residential house, you make it residential.
It's a broken property, that's why.
You can't, you can't put industrial in a residential area anyway.
So...
Yeah, I think we should rezone our village to...
Ah, yeah, there you go, yeah. Open space.
All right, so...
That's why we have split districts.
These blocks here.
Clause for split districts.
That's a weird one. What are you calling a RA with village?
Schuster house. We do, we don't.
Mansion. That's the Schuster mansion.
Well, the village residential.
It's not a great idea.
I read its details.
I don't know why RA's up here.
Bring in some...
That, that will require rezoning, right?
According to that law, is that law RA or is that?
What, they want a special permit?
That now is not zoned for business. Not residential.
The residential.
We have to go for zoning change for that. That should stay for us.
I was too actually wanting.
Make zoning change.
We saw this...
Town meeting.
Yeah, town meeting. Can only be done at town meeting.
But it's proposed by someone. Is that else?
That's the discrepancy.
We usually get it requested to be sponsored by the board.
Planning board usually is the one who presents it.
The property line is the...
zoning changes come to planning board if we presented it at town meeting.
I mean, what?
So we, we would endorse something or not endorse something?
Yeah. That one there.
Or another.
Change the lot. The change is owning table.
The ones that have a split, that they have hacked out. I would say the last.
Easy.
Okay, can you decide?
Break team.
Was that, that's new?
Come on, we gotta get out of here.
Um, how many lots are affected? Did they tell us?
Yeah, I have a spreadsheet that I can show you and I've sent it to everybody.
No.
Yeah, we've been kicking this can down the road too long. Gotta make a decision tonight.
I'm saying, all the, all the lots that they have, the hash lines through, for all lots are, are more than one zone.
You talking about that spot you were talking about?
Are they developed or activated on?
All the ones with hash line.
The majority are on.
That has more than one zone. The one next one has more than one zone.
I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you right now that anything that's residential...
Needs to stay residential.
Needs to stay residential.
Split, the split that's residential needs to be fully residential.
Yeah.
Right.
So any lot that is split residential right now should go to all residential, so that, that boundary should be extended. And then leave it at that. And then the, what is it? The industrial?
And commercial.
Is.
Should go industrial and commercial.
So we said, we said yellow was residential.
Yeah.
Are any of those hash slash things red slashes over yellow? I mean, from here, they look like red over white.
Well, some of them are white within.
No, they're white over red, but, um... Get punchy.
Do you have red over yellow or yellow over red?
Like I said, the problem we don't have, we have is we don't know what's here right now.
Right.
Well, that's RA. Is there a house in that?
Let's do like the...
No, there's nothing on the RA.
San Forest says industrial.
Okay, so make, so that's...
Well, it ended up being a sold.
No, so that's the property line right here. So there's probably nothing there.
We got two more coming before us.
See where I'm going?
Yeah.
So I, I don't...
Make it happen.
If this is the property line.
Pick one.
That lot, right? There's one, two, three different zones.
Can we do these on me tonight? Minutes?
No, let's, let's get this done. We'll pick one tonight and go over there.
We can wait a minute.
At least those four. Just start. And that one right there, that one down there. It's all red and you just have that little diamond. See that little one right there? Is that what you wanna know? Have some...
I need specific direction from the board, is what I need.
Yeah.
Okay, so tell me what you want.
Well, Mike.
I just pointed out those areas.
Yeah, well, we can't, I can't, which area? Point them out.
At least, let's, let's try this. You have that one there, the street different zones. That one down here, I think there's four zones in it. That block right there. There'd be, there's more than one, three zones, one, two, three. That one there is two zones. This one here has one, two, three zones. That one there is two zones.
Should we look at the whole, have them do the whole quadrant right there? I mean, it's all...
You wanna do whatever you want.
Want to zoom out? No, no, have them work on what Mike just pointed, all, that whole quadrant. We can start over here.
Work on what, what he wants to know.
You don't understand.
Any...
Which parcel, which specific parcel is being rezoned from what to what? Okay, that's what I need to know.
Right, the problem that...
We don't have the buildings that uses, the owners, we don't know what's, it's just a map.
No, you did have that. I slipped out of spreadsheets.
Yeah, we had all.
Partially residential.
Yeah, we, we had all the owners.
You said we do homework.
All the parcels.
But right here before is overlaid with this to know what's...
I can call up GIS, that's why I brought the computer in.
Can you overlay it with the...
Can we have one more meeting?
No, that's a PDF.
Maybe we need to have a mid-meeting for this, just like a working meeting or something.
We almost did.
Yeah, I said you were gonna be the chair of the subcommittee for the rezoning of the map.
Like next Monday or Tuesday or something. I know, I know, it's more time, but I don't want to do it.
I think, how many lots are there? Do you know on this spreadsheet? I think the only way that we're gonna be able to clearly see it is, okay, this one lot, it's this location, it has a residential house on it.
Right.
It's gonna turn residential fully. That, we gotta take each lot
One at a time.
individually.
I mean, we really need like
But what happens?
together a map on the table in front of us with the, the houses and what they are.
We had that.
But to get, we had all that.
What do we do?
Amnesia.
We just haven't been doing our homework.
We haven't done the...
It's the first sign of getting older.
But graphically, you know, me, I work graphically. I work with trace paper and identify, and that's how, together, I mean, I just don't work that way.
This is a good exercise, but...
We do with a lot that is, has a home or something on it.
Yeah.
So it's partly residential and it might have a business on it.
Right, if someone sends me something, client, in the email, I don't do it. I still be together.
So what do you do? If you zone it?
So that's why we have something with the split districts. So the, the lots with the split districts, that's the way that you solve that. And if the lot is not built upon yet, we could probably do something, but, um, we, we could probably make a pretty quick decision.
We don't have a split lot.
Yes, we do.
Definition, do we?
Yes, in our zoning.
Never seen it anywhere.
Yes, you have. West Street, the guy had half VR, half RA. We just saw that like three years ago. Not across the street from me. No, across the street from, uh, GBI. Sorry, right now.
Yeah, that, that land.
Yeah, where BNL Pool is and
Res, is, uh...
the dance studio is and all that.
Uh, RA in the back.
It's commercial residential.
Yes. So that, so we...
So...
Want me to come in? But you can't change...
How many are there?
For an hour and then...
It's hundreds.
Okay.
Hundreds.
Okay.
You can't change residential to anything.
That's why we zoom in.
You can't cringe on it either too much. You're just changing it and it peels back out. It's not gonna like it.
No, that's the, this comes to my head with, no, it doesn't work. You can't go far.
So, if I looked in the zoning handbook or whatever, this, when they have the tables back there, here are the zones and here are the uses.
Yep.
You're saying there's a defined zone name called...
The thing is, like on this one.
No, if there is a lot that is split by two districts.
Yes.
There is a definition that remedies that. It's in the zoning bylaw.
Are you doing this flip?
Okay, but it's not necessarily in that table.
Correct.
No.
In the zoning book.
It's a plot. It's verbiage.
There's a bunch of lots on Maple Street that have industrial in the rear portion of the lot. And, you know, they're being developed residentially because they're fronting on Maple Street and there's provisions in the zoning bylaw that allow that. And, and speak to the interpretation of how the law will be considered from a zoning perspective.
Well, we've also had people try to go and work on the industrial lot, put the residential on it, and then it gets shut down because it's residential, it's not industrial. But yet there's industrial land on it. We've had that more than once in front of us, where battle comes up because it's a split lot. And that's why we're trying to do this, is just to clean it up. Like this one lot, this three, this three zones in that one lot, industrial, RA and village.
But you need a, a split lot definition, not a definition, but a title, right?
We're, we're trying to eliminate it. We're trying to make it along.
We have to pick one or the other. We're trying to decide which ones should be.
So you would zone it, you would zone it residential even though there's a business there or a...
No, that's why, that's why, we have an idea of where we wanna go. Then we find out what the owner of the property.
Yeah, it was, yeah, he wanted to go all residential, cause he wanted to build houses.
I don't think.
The owner.
In the cross, you're gonna have to call it something and it has to, it has to be put in a bucket.
That's correct, but if there's a house on it, right? And then there's industrial on it. We have the homeowner come in, or get ahold of the homeowner and say, I know that you have a house on it. Wanna make the lot all residential. Residential. Are you okay with that? Oh, yeah, we get rid of that industrial land, so then we go ahead and we're brought in front of the town meeting. To get rid of that split zone and make it one.
Being residential.
Residential, because he's living on it. Eliminate those split lots. Now, if there's nothing on it, two thirds of it's industrial. Get ahold of the owner, find out, do you want to rest it all industrial, buddy? If he says, yeah, so now you make that one lot. Industrial, so to have all this.
What we got, we're doing, doing the best possible with what we got.
Cause he hasn't built what he did.
So can we take this to one more meeting?
We can, but I don't know how gracious.
January twenty-second?
CMRPC's gonna reach some point where they're gonna say, no, we're done.
Yeah, we're not gonna do this anymore. You guys have to make a decision.
And they're entitled to, yes.
Done because they wanna be paid on the work they do.
Well, it's not really a paid thing, it's part of our membership. So we're already extended into this calendar year. Actually, it was past July, I think, is when we were supposed to finish this.
We paid for those hours.
We did.
Yeah, we paid them.
Okay.
But they're not, you know, forever.
Yeah.
No, I know, but we paid for them.
Right, they're not doing anything, they gotta do, we're not asking them to do anything more than they wouldn't have done to finish the project, so, right.
I don't think they're making any revisions, they haven't, they just wanna close them out, right? Close out the project.
I wanna close it.
I will, yeah. I'd like to get something else to talk to.
I just wanna go home.
Do you, you have one?
That's more weak, yeah.
One's not gonna do it.
Yeah, one twenty-two.
Okay.
All right, well.
All right, I'm, I'm agreeable to that as long as the decision is made this next meeting.
Yes.
If not, I'm gonna take a dot and throw it, and wherever it sticks, that's what we can tell CMRPC to concentrate on.
Okay.
All right?
I'll look at it.
Well, I think we've already established where we wanna concentrate, it's just each individual lot.
Oh, you want to see, you wanna see the individual lots, all right.
Well, there's a house there.
Cause it, cause we're not, I mean, it's not any, we're not moving forward on anything. We're not, we're not, we're not contacting people, we're just asking CMRPC to finish their recommendation. And we can look at it and do whatever we want.
Yeah.
We just have to pick that area we want them to finish their concentration on.
A garage in a residential neighborhood and he's been running, fixing cars for forty years. We gotta know that, you know, it's just.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, and the other thing with CMRPC.
So, all right, one more meeting, otherwise the dot goes.
This other meeting with CMRPC, you guys did, um, I left early.